The situation is we will take nominations for either individual candidates and officers or for slate. And I would also remind people that typically speaking, we have anointed Ms. Jamel as secretary. Which is point number two, all offices except secretary must be filled by board members. So with that, I will hand it to you to, if you want.
I don't know what to do.
Then I will take from here.
I'm sorry. This is my first time.
Send them, and that's fine.
I've never done an election of officers before. So should I just read something?
Well, I'll tell you what, I can take it over from here.
Can I make the motion by our initiative? Do you have to do more?
Well, and I'm just about to say, so really, let's start with the motion on positions until we recognize Ms. Bailey.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate a slate of officers. Tamika Bukovic is president, myself is vice president, Ben Wen is treasurer, Andy Franklin is clerk, Carla is assistant clerk, and continuing on in her secretary role.
I will just pull the board and see if everyone would accept those nominations. Ms. Bukovic.
Ms. Second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Is there a second? Then I will pull. Ms. Bukovic, would you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey, would you accept that nomination? Mr. Wen, would you?
Yes.
And I would like to make a motion to have Carla serve as clerk and I serve as assistant clerk. I think Carla is wonderful, competent, is very involved at a number of leadership roles within our school district. And I would respectfully ask for friendly amendment, if you approve, to have Carla be clerk and I would serve as assistant clerk.
You just want to focus, Tom? Um, I would ask, I, past practice has been to have the newest board member perform the role of assistant clerk is my understanding. So that they have some time to learn and adjust, but I would ask.
And the, and the other thing is the only reason it was last year is because literally we were thinking about what happens if there was three different board members. Because if I didn't run, Molly didn't run, there would have been, and then Ben being new, we had this kind of. Everybody had to learn something in case there was, so it's up to Carla.
Yeah, I don't care. I'm happy to do it. I know Anthony's coasting.
Okay.
I understand.
Look, I'm not going anywhere, but I mean, you know, I think the world is very.
I'm looking at the description, signed documents each. I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, then. And I think I need a second on that motion and two.
Second.
Okay, great. Now that we've gone through all of that, on the slate before us, we have Ms. Bukovic, president, Ms. Bailey, vice president, Mr. Wen, treasurer, clerk, Carla Pennington Cross, and Andrew Franklin, assistant clerk. Please signify. Well, I shall do, I'll just make sure it's legit. I'll start with Ms. Bukovic. All in favor, please signify. I'm sorry, if you are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Great. Ms. Pennington Cross, you have to win.
Aye.
Ms. Bailey?
Aye.
And Andrew Franklin votes aye. This gavel, I am really, I just want to say, I am thrilled. I've worked with you for so many years on the board. I am thrilled to be giving you this gavel. Please reel mercifully.
You have to move.
I'm not moving. You guys are not moving.
Okay. Then you get to do the motion on the secretary. Or you get to run it from here, unless you want me to.
Just finish it off and then I'm.
All right, then, secretary, is there a motion to nominate Ms. Jamel?
So moved.
Is there a second? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then I think we're done with four A. Congratulations to everyone. Item four B.
No, wait, no, 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 no.
I have to get you to not call any items though, not that way.
No, we're on to. It is recommended that the board govern policies be affirmed by board.
Every year, we reform, reaffirm the existing policy so that in the next town, in the next year, the electoral year that we're governed by the same policy, subject to whatever changes maybe. So we need a motion that formally now turns the policy to that year.
This is for board governance policies, correct? Or are.
Yes.
Right, not, aren't.
Board member, all board member policies and rules.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's basically.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So we need a motion, so moved. Second. I'll second it.
All right.
I am still a member. All in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Motion carries. We are down to four B, no, four C.
Two C.
Two C, or two C. He started with determination of board minute, our meeting schedule.
So it's recommended the board approve the meeting schedule for regular board meetings for the 2223 school year. Looks like every month it's the third Wednesday, except for August due to the budget hearing.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion, it's second and all in favor.
I just wanted to confirm, you said, do we check, if I recall, Jewish holidays in September are on the weekend this year? Or is it in conflict? So I just want to.
I can look up the calendar.
They don't.
Okay.
I looked at it when I was looking at the.
Great, then I have no further questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two D, determination of depositories.
So as a procedural matter, the board needs to authorize to designate depositories for district funds for the remainder of 2122 and for 2223. So it's recommended the board approve the listed district depositories for the need for those two time periods.
As a table.
And where?
Twenty one, twenty three.
Twenty one, twenty, oh, in the top part, it's accurate. Yeah, it's accurate in the recommendation.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moving in secret, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Five, two, one, zero. Determination of committee assignments. Normally, we do do this by the next meeting. Because we don't know who the president will be at any given time, so we will be announcing those between now and the next board meeting. So I move that this be laid over, we'll announce it on the next.
I'll second the motion table until next meeting.
Even though, wait, with the caveat that they will be assigned and passed for meetings before the next.
Well, committees just go on as they are until new assignments, right?
With a new assignment.
Okay, okay, got it.
And then, well, and obviously, you do the appointment doesn't need to be on the agenda, but we're just tabling it so you can do that. That's how you actually do your motion.
So let me make myself very clear, I have to be precise. In the past, we have done these and given them out in between the meetings. And we have actually had meetings with the new committees in between this board meeting and the June board meeting. On the June board meeting, we will announce who there are on the agenda, but these committees will already be set. Because they technically don't have to be voted on, so it really doesn't matter. Um, do we have a vote on tabling this until the next board?
Motion.
A motion, second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non, motion carries. We are going to, so congratulations. Business is done. Now we'll go to celebrations, three A, thank yous.
So our thank you this month is to the foundation. So I don't know if Carla wants to sign her own card, but I'll. So for the emergency fund this year, for supporting fundraising for the van and for the spring fling, which was fabulous. We're all excited, all the administrators are excited as we're scheduling our principal and superintendent for the day visits over the next couple of weeks. And so just thank you, thank you, thank you. I know it was a lot of work for everybody in the fall, you were meeting once a week, twice a week, towards the edges, all the time, so. It was a really amazing venue and amazing event, and I really enjoyed my first experience with it, so. Thank you for everything the foundation does. Not a lot of districts have a foundation, so it's pretty incredible.
Is that all the thank yous?
Yes.
Three B, PTO and foundation update.
So for PTO, they are, they said they're very excited about their first school walk run. It was pretty amazing. The principals could talk to that. Community pledged over $6,000. All proceeds will go to funding the inclusive transportation van. Special thank you to Tiffany Baden, Rollstan, if I'm saying that correctly, for coming up with the idea. I've been seeing her emails, her updates, all of those things going out, working so hard to see it through. And on a less cheerful note, the PTO is down to two board members, so they really, really need people to hopefully come and step up and volunteer to be board members. They need at least one more, preferably two for next year.
Foundation? Do you want me to talk? Yeah, so we had a spring fling, it was pretty successful. We also have a leadership gap, so for anyone who's here and is interested in volunteering or is on Zoom, lots and lots of opportunities. PTO has a lot of fall events, and the foundation typically has a fall run walk, so we're all feeling pretty desperate for for volunteers. Talk to me if you want to volunteer.
Three C, school spotlight. Are you ready for the spotlight?
Yes. Ms. Cornet's this year. To share our.
So I'm Michelle Cornet. I am the math coaching interventionist here at Glenn Hills, a branded physician. I've been in the district for quite a while, but enjoying the role and being able to affect change on the, start that process rolling. And so Jenica asked if I would do a presentation on our bridge curriculum for tonight. So this is just getting people familiar with what it is and how it works. So we can go on ahead. So what is Bridges Math班? It's a, it's a program that runs from kindergarten through fifth grade. It's an elementary math program. It's Common Core aligned and Common Core gets beaten up pretty regularly. Common Core is really just a list of what students should be learning at different grade levels, if that's, it's nothing more than that. And so all fourth graders are all learning the same, the same content in. The districts get to choose how that learning happens by choosing curriculum and things like that. That's all Common Core is. And so what that ensures is that if a student moves from Glendale to Milwaukee to Fond du Lac to Racine, they're going to have the same content. They don't have to worry about, about that. It's an activities-based program instead of a, as the way that most of us were taught math, where the teacher dispensed information and then he might practice it and then you go home and practice some more problems. You're involved in the learning. There are activities that happen where kids are building their understanding. The content is previewed and reviewed, so, for example, I was a fourth grade teacher. That's the content that I'm most familiar with. And so fractions and multiplication and division are big areas that year. And so fractions come up multiple times throughout the year so that your brain can think things through, they can build a little bit more on that, and then come back and practice it again. Which is, in the past, we've had curriculums that you, you visit one topic and then you come and revisit a year later and try to remember what it is that you learned last year in addition to what you need to learn this year. So that helps to keep it fresh in your mind.
I'm marrying something. I meant to try to make it better, and I definitely did not.
So I'll just keep on, I forgot how just things kind of remembered. So we started this curriculum three years ago, 2019, 2020, that for the school year. We piloted it in two grade levels, two classrooms per grade level is what I mean to say. And so I was one of those pilot classrooms in the fourth grade. We went virtual in March. March 13th was our last day of school that year. So then our second year of implementation, we implemented across all math classrooms, K through five, virtually, four days a week, secretists, so hope something we hopefully don't need to talk about again in learning context, but. And then this year is our third year, our second year of all classrooms having it. Some people are using it for their third year. And so this year, we started the year socially distanced and not being able to have those small groups and carings at the beginning of the year because we needed to keep our, our, our distance and be careful with that. But we are all in person. We are in school five days a week, and so we've gotten to get further in the program than we have before, which is nice. So this year, we also added K4 to the program, and I don't remember if it was their idea, so go ahead and start in April. But they started playing with it with the little teeny-tinies, and so that's exciting as well. So what did I talk about next?
Can I ask a question while you're waiting, just to kill time?
Sure.
Because it's what's on my mind. Oh, there it is. Never mind. I'll wait.
Yeah, and so I'm going to look at how does Bridge support all of the people who are invested in it? And then what are some, some challenges that Bridges gives to us? So Bridges has a lot of materials to help teachers, and so there are eight units. Each unit has a nice thick binder. The binder goes over what, so I'm going to talk from a fourth grade perspective. So it tells me what students learned in third grade and how they learned it. So we're looking at multiplication. What was the multiplication that worked? They did as third graders? What will they be doing with this work as fifth graders, and how am I teaching this work right now? So there's eight uni binders. There's something called number corner, so, you know, lessons take about an hour. Then there's number corner for about 20 minutes, and so that has a calendar that has a card for each day, and there's a pattern. So it might be different fractions throughout the day, and so you're noticing patterns, or it might be place value or something like that. So there's two binders for that, because each month has its own activities, its own calendar. And then there's an assessment binder where it gets really into what problems students mastered, what problems they missed, and what that means as to what they're, what knowledge they might need to go back and hit again. There's lots and lots of manipulative, which is really important. In the past, our curriculums have been pencil and paper. If this has all of the things with them makes the learning more concrete and they can. It just comes with it, so teachers don't have to worry about, do I ask for it? Is it in the budget? It already came and is there? There's vocabulary words. Vocabulary is super important to math, to be able to explain ideas well and to be able to build on your knowledge. If you go into classrooms, you'll hear kids using the actual terminology to, of their learning in that. The Bridges website has all of this information on it, plus it has videos on getting things started. It has overviews of units. It has resources that were created by teachers that Bridges vets and says, yes, this is good material, use this. Instead of going to teachers, pay teachers are going on Facebook and influencing from there. This is stuff that they've now run, said, this aligns the way we want it to align. Go ahead and use this. And also, like, so when we were virtual, it had lots of resources in there for taking your class virtual and being able to present on a screen and have virtual manipulative. So it includes information that's timely for everything that we need. Supporting students. It's a point, so by building information, so learning sticks better when you create it yourself than when you just kind of passively receive, because you've all had that experience where you're sitting in class and you're doing what the teacher does, and then you go home to do the homework, and you're like, I don't know what I'm doing. I don't know how to do it. Where this, they're building the learning as they go. The lessons are very interactive. Students are working in small groups, students are working in pairs. Students are playing games. The number corner lessons are also built that way. A lot of the number corner activities are going up and measuring something and recording measurements and then more games in there. The fluency work comes up in the number corners as well. Math is on display in our classrooms for the first time, really through Bridges. That number corner has all of the patterns that are up there. The vocabulary cards are up in the room. The activities that happen in the number corner are recorded. So just like for reading and writing workshop, we would have those topics up in our room. Now we also have math up in our room. Kids get to work with manipulative. Kids get to see those vocabulary cards.
Can I just, I apologize, I want to interject with this point of order. This is school spotlight. And we're talking about what we're going to be adopting?
No, this is what we have.
What we've been using this year?
This is our third year.
So this is what we've been using for fourth and?
Kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth.
Okay, so that's why I wanted to make sure, because I was getting a little bit confused with all the details. What our, you know, role here is board was going to be, but we're just. Thank you.
So supporting families, there's a letter that goes home at the beginning of the unit that says, what is the content that's going to be covered in that unit? How is it going to be covered? What, what can you do as a parent to support that learning? There's also Bridges Family website that has all of that information on it, as well as method home activities and math apps on there to help support learning. Challenges, the size of the program is also a challenge. There's a lot to go through and a lot to find your way. There's tons of resources, but there's lots of places to look for those resources. The resources come up in multiple places. You can find them many different ways, but it takes a while to learn all of that. The other challenge is that you're teaching math in a way that you did not learn math. And so just like that's difficult for parents, that's also can be difficult for teachers. And so learning to curate conversations and push students to interact with each other in positive ways is something that can be new for teachers. Challenges for students, that same thing, that they, especially some of our older students, they're like, why don't you just tell me what to do? No, because you need to build this. I can tell you what to do, but if, if that's all that teaching was, we could be done burning in about a year, right? It doesn't really work that way. You have to build the connections and build the understandings. And then they also need to learn to have those learning conversations together, and so that's new for them too. Challenges for families, to them, if a second grader comes home with math and we all know how to do second grade math, but they're doing it in a way that we're not understanding what the. So that can feel frustrating to parents. So I guess I'm moving on. So I asked teachers to send me pictures and videos of Bridges in their classroom, and so we can go on ahead there. So we're starting off in a K4 classroom, so Mrs. Adamovich sent me some pictures of little K4s in her room saying the game's going to get, they started doing this in April, so this is brand new stuff for them. And so she shared, K4 students are engaging in the Bridges pre-K math curriculum this spring. We love the Bridges pre-K. It is playful and play-based, designed to engage our students through games, stories, mysteries, intriguing puzzles, and we can feel. And then in the first game, Mrs. Hoss, she said two videos. This one's about a minute and a half. Two children playing a workplace game.
It's like you have to spin it, spin it like this. And if you land on a nine, you're going to get a call. I click seven sixteen, so then you trace, you color it in, or put an X on it, or X. And then you're going to like, it's seventeen, so then you get to color it in, or X. And we play lots of it in a video. All right, let's get started. I don't use a beat.
And so they, they negotiate how to play the game when they disagree with one another. The games are played, there's usually about six games per unit, and so there's timing in the lesson to go and practice those skills. So that's every piece of practice that we'd be able to start to internalize and be able to remember those skills on their own. We can move on. I think we'll just skip the next video, just to keep things moving. So we'll skip that one, while we just have teeny-tinies. All these supplies are given by Bridges, so the cards, the dice, the, all of that is there. And then I ask the teachers to say what they're, what they feel like they're able to do really well with the program at this point, two years in, two, three years in, and then what their next steps are for what they plan to do to increase their practice, so. The bigger, she talks about the tools that they like to use, the classroom community, and that playing the games is a good way to integrate SCL. So SCL is kind of coming in here, that kids are negotiating with one another, what it is that they need to do, stand up for themselves when they feel that they're right. Learn how to respectfully disagree with someone else when you think that they're wrong. All of those skills are coming in in a math class. What they plan to do next, tier two interventions, so students who are not learning current grade level content quite as quickly as other kids, how to bring those in in different ways is what they're looking at next. So then, next we have Mrs. Gember, and Mrs. Gember has.
I'm sorry, could you go back just for one second? So I'm reading, and I just want to make sure, and it says, right now, we are supporting your tier two students of current workplaces. We hope the intervention block will allow for some of this next year. I mean, I think that it does, what?
Sorry, what is the intervention?
No, the, under, for the work support, we hope that the intervention block will allow for supportive tier two students. I mean, isn't that just a matter of just planning to make sure that you reach out to those students? I mean, you can firm that up, right? You can say, you know, we are going to make time for intervention of tier two students.
I'm sure you can follow up, Mrs. Hoppin, that.
It just seems kind of tentative and I.
This is, this is her, I asked her to write something up, and maybe she could have crafted that sentence a little bit differently, or maybe she meant something different. So if you want to follow up with Mrs. Hoppin, you could do that. Yeah, the plan is that we're working on, firming up more time with our tier two students, yeah. So Mrs. Gember, this is her geometry unit, and what's really awesome about this picture, we have a picture of her number corner right here with some of the cards turned over. The curriculum comes with storybooks for kids to read, and it comes with a virtual one as well, so that you can present it for all kids to follow, instead of the giant cardboard books that like five kids could see. And then the tools, they have Geo boards, they have rubber bands to make their triangles on there. And then more workplace games. It goes at different strategies. That's another critique people sometimes have, why does my child need to learn five different ways to do the same skill? Because one of them is going to clip with your kid and the rest won't. And so they're exposed to these different learning strategies. They pick the one that works for them and they keep using it. So we have the seven penguins, how many more would make 10? We draw seven dots. We add two more dots. We hold up our fingers. We figure out where seven fingers are. We realize we have three fingers left to make 10. Someone here has a domino pattern or they have a number family. So they're doing it in the ways that work for them. Games area perimeter is just, is a two concepts that kids mix up all the way through middle school. They can't remember which ones which sort of building a perimeter around. And then Mrs. Kimber is sharing their work. She got Mrs. B involved to make a table runner. And they auctioned those off at the spring thing last weekend. It was with work that they had done in as a part of their geometry, looking at triangles. Um, so we're going to skip this video for now because it's kind of a lot, but this is a video of number corner. And they're talking about, they put out a 200 milliliter container of water. And so each day they measure to see how much water is in there today and how much water is in there today. To see the rate of evaporation and to chart things, to practice measuring liquid volume, to get a good feel for how big a milliliter is and 200 milliliters are. And so she talked about things that she's proud of this year is that she's able to get most of the curriculum in most of the days. Cause and then this year they're making, they're into unit seven now or in the past we haven't made it that far with all that's been going on. Next plans for her are planning her small groups using the intervention materials. I don't think I mentioned that before that Bridges comes with its own intervention material. So my kids are not understanding a concept based on what they're, like if they missed this problem, this problem, this problem of a test, you can be guided over to these intervention materials that has a setup of five to 10 lessons to hone in on filling in that skill. It also gives you the test to see did they learn what they needed to learn? And then they go back in and they've done with that intervention. Or maybe they need to continue and so it gives you skills to keep continuing with that as well. So her plans are to make more use of those intervention materials. To organize the games where you have the games that you're using during normally for about six games at a time. But to have those other games all set up in a way that if she wanted to pull one quick for a kid that she's noticing use that, that she could just pull that instead of going back through all the rest of to find the material she needs. And then to support parent professionals in the room and understanding how things work and getting them on just. Mr. Yes has two students that have an amazing math conversation there. And that's just who they are. They're math buddies and they talk math all the time. And that's kind of part of their persona. They like to talk about that. But she's a first year teacher and first year using Bridges as well. And so she's talking about getting comfortable and enjoying the conversations that kids are having that she wasn't having, wasn't realizing more comfort for this. And then her goal also is working with small groups next year. So next year we're going to have the math curriculum review. On the focus of the math curriculum review is not to look for a new program. The focus is to look at how are we, so we can go to the next slide. The focus is to look at how are we, how are we doing an implementation right now? So look at the, the math standards were tweaked this year. And so looking at how those are hitting the program, those tweaks are hitting the program. Looking at our data to see what are students doing well so far with the program, what are students not doing as well with? Then is that, is that due to us? Is that the program, what tweaks do we need to do, need to do to help with that? And then to look at our instructional practices. We have rolled out this program, but we have done it under some extreme circumstances. And so we are not yet teaching it to fidelity because that's the way it's been. And so what do we need to do to get our practices up to where we want them to be with the program? So if you have any other questions, if I can answer them, I'll answer them. If I can't, I'll point you to where you can find the answer. Questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Kimber.
I do have some questions.
Well, I'm just, I never go first. Well, since you asked, I, you just said that this, the review that they're going to do is not to review.
It's not to choose a new program. It's still, since we are so pretty new into this program and things have been a little bit crazy. So let's see where we're at with this program and what we need to do. Kind of review our data and how this program is serving us so far, as well as how are we working the program compared to how the program actually runs?
Okay. And the only reason I'm asking that is if you look at the data and everything is crap. I'm just saying, if, and wouldn't we be looking to find a new curriculum instead of trying to do better? I'm just asking, it's like, I don't want, I, I'm trying to see, figure out if we're just reviewing it just to review it and tweak it, even though it might be bad. And sometimes we do do that where the curriculum is horrible, but we just got into it. We know it's horrible. We're trying to fix it. But in five years, we're like, yeah, we knew it was horrible in three years. We tried to fix it. Didn't work and we've wasted a lot of time. So is, is part of that evaluation saying, you know what, we're going to see what works with didn't, but is it really working? And then moving forward then I guess that is where I want that.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, feedback from teachers has been really strong so far. And the converse of what we're doing would be to kind of just continue with the program without doing any reflection or digging in. And so what we're doing right now, like we've been teaching while we've been learning video and while we've been doing all this. And so now we can focus in on the teaching and what that data looks like. We're happy with it. We see good things coming from the kids, but that's anecdotal versus data. And so we'll be looking at the data. If there was something terrible, then of course we would do that. But our feeling is that it's doing good things. And we want to make sure that the data backs that up. And then if there are gaps, what we're just going to do.
So one, one of the issues I have with Bridges, I, I, I like some of the things it offers, things like that, but it doesn't really base its instruction or how it would recommend instruction on cognitive flow theory. Which is the idea, because in there it says something about like how, you know, things aren't memorized. But you know, when you're learning something, you do want to put into your long-term memory.
And so that's a big, another thing between common core and that's another perception that's out there is that current math is not teaching things with an expectation of them being memorized. And what it actually is doing is if, again, if memorization was that easy, if we could just flashcard kids and they'd be good, then this wouldn't be an issue, but that doesn't work for most kids. And so what we're doing.
I don't know if that's true.
I do. So we're using strategies again and again to get into things. So like seven times eight is a hard multiplication fact, but you can break that down into five times eight plus two times eight. And so we get into that. So like when you're stuck and you don't remember what it is and you don't have access to a calculator, you can still get to that fact. So it's building in strategies to get to facts when you don't have them memorized. With the goal of having them memorized. Just like there's another perception that we don't care about right answers in math anymore, which is also.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say any of that though. So, no, my concern is with cognitive flow theory. So the idea is that there's a working memory and long-term memory. And so our working memory can become easily overloaded. And so the idea is that you want to chunk as much as you can into that long-term mem- memory. And really, if you, if you really simplify what learning is, it's getting from what's in your working memory into your long-term memory. So for example, if I'm teaching factoring or something like that. There's about, I don't know, I think I've counted anywhere from six to eight steps. So it's my job as a math teacher to break those steps up so that I can clearly explain the process to the students.
And so.
So you know, there's, there's different processes to it. So you know, there's finding A times C. Then you have to find the factors of A times C that add up to D, things like that. But the problem is if they don't know what seven times eight is, that clogs up their working memory. But if it's already in their long-term memory, then they can retrieve that. And then that's not something they have to think about. So again, just with, with what, some of the stuff that was written there, where it says, well, okay, so we're leaning away from memorization. You know, there's five different ways to do things. Well, five different ways to do things is going to clog up working memory. So anyway, so those are some of my concerns with it, but we can talk about it more.
Okay. So I'm going to repeat them. So five different ways doesn't mean that you're using five different ways every time you're being explosive, have different ways to picking the one that works for you. And you're doing that one. So you are not clogging up that up. The second one, yes. That I've worked here as a parent, as a special ed parent. And so working with seventh and eighth graders who don't know their multiplication facts. And they have to figure out algebra, which is, I assume is an understanding of multiplication, multiplicative thinking with and being able to pull that up. And you don't know, okay, what is a multiple of this or what is a factor of this? Yes, you need to know your multiplication facts. And this is a way to get to them for our students who are not quick memorizers who don't have that down. Most kids can memorize five, four, three, about 60 to 70 of those basic facts and those last 30 basic facts. Six times six, seven times eight, nine times six. Don't get there and they take a while to get there. And so you use those strategies to get there. So that when you're in the middle of that test and you have a four-step problem, like you said, you don't get lost thinking about, okay, how do I get to this? One fact and then get back into that problem without losing my train of thinking. This is another way to fill that those facts. It's not.
But the problem is when you're in second grade and you're given five different ways to learn something. Sometimes that can be difficult to learn it and put into a long-term memory.
In general. All right. We're gonna, thank you for that presentation. Let's go to discussion. And we are moving, uh, let's see behavioral expectation and safety plan to the front center for, for, and that will be our four A.
In many ways, I want to, or take the lead on this. Obviously, we know in schools everywhere and here in our district behaviors have increased this year. The amount of behaviors have increased significantly this year. There are many factors that have gone into that. And there are many things being put in place to support that this year and going into next year. Obviously, after last week's incident, there was a request by the board understandably to bring this discussion to this board meeting tonight. I pulled some things together for you guys. One of the things that did go out between the request and tonight was Ms. Young's communication to families, which charted out the things that we're putting in place this year and the things that we're putting in place for next year. So you guys all have that, all families have that. The other thing that I provided was just an overview some of the behavioral information. So you guys let me know where, where you want to start the conversation and.
So what I, what I suggest is that we hear whatever is prepared by the staff. Then what I want to hear is anyone who wants to speak on this from the parents or on the Zoom or in here before the discussion starts with the board. Remember, once the discussion starts with the board, we will not take any other questions or comments. So I would ask for everybody to listen to what the school administrators have to say. And then we will listen to what whoever's on Zoom or teachers have to say. And then we'll have comment or conversations between us and next steps. But this is not a, a actionable item on the agenda. We're just going to have discussion and conversation.
It is set for potential action. We're, we so choose point of order. I know it's under the heading of discussion, but it does have potential action.
Yeah, but we have, I mean.
I just added it in case there was anything the board wanted to recommend. So that it was there. Um, so going through, Lindsay. First piece that is shared on the slide is office referrals. This means any behavior that was referred to administration. So there could be classroom behaviors. They would get a separate document, the teachers track. These are office referrals. This is from September to April. Um, the reason it's September to April and I don't have May is because there, Ms. Young actually put together a scholar expectations committee. In April was a group of teachers that are coming together to talk about behaviors and she had pulled this data for that purpose. Um, so we had that ready. So you can see the breakdown by race and also by students with IEPs and students without IEPs and also by gender. So this would be total office referral. So this would include suspensions, phone calls, home conversations, like anything that's referred to the office.
So I'm just going to clarify, so office referrals, when a teacher refers a student or an administrator for a disposition versus a teacher handling it on the.
In the classroom.
Yeah. So anything that's not managed within the classroom and a student is sent to the office or an administrator is called to the classroom to support that student in the classroom, that would be an office referral.
And how, how, how do you track that? So how do you?
Infinite campus. So the teachers put that into infinite campus.
So if a teacher makes a call to say, I need support or I want whatever it is, then that teacher is responsible for, that teacher documents it in the campus. That's the expectation.
Right. And sometimes depending on if it, it, so it would go, it goes to a system and alerts Mr. Williams and I. And then we put a resolution to it on the backside of it in infinite campus.
Are you talking about the behavior incident report? Like the, the long form they're supposed to fill out about what happened before, when they're requesting. I'm sorry, that might not be the name for it.
It looks like that when it was printed out and that was everything. It was what the teacher put in, what the principals did as.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm referring, I'm sorry.
So that goes into that, so a teacher has something and they basically mark in there who the teacher is, who the student is, what happened? And then they submit it and then Mr. Williams and I see it, we respond to it. So typically we respond to it after we've had a chance to, to talk to a child and like take a look at what the situation was depending on what happened. Um, or why we were followed or why the child was sent out of the classroom. So anything that would go to us, there are times when if we're responding more immediately, Mr. Williams and I fill out that paperwork on both sides. Just because we're the ones who are handling it in our office spaces, if that makes sense. So that would be anything that's, that's handled by administration and there is a disposition given by administration versus a teacher handling it within our space.
So if a teacher reaches out to you guys and then the administration ends up not being involved, say it goes back to the teacher and the teacher handles it, that's not documented. Or that doesn't require documentation because you weren't part of the disposition or the solution. Is that, does that question make sense?
If something, if something can be solved with the teacher, then it likely would not be documented. But typically a parent is contacted and then they put that into the contact log, which is a separate thing that just is what the teachers, in the teacher's record. And we can see it. So it's an infant campus that they call parent and, and speak to parents about it.
But that, that's not listed here. Right. So to have a full picture of incidents, discipline, behaviors, you probably have to look at the contact log, the, the other, there's something else behavior and then. Okay. Sorry. I'm just.
But there's, there's office referrals and then there's a contact log.
Okay, so those.
Contact log is really just like, I'm a teacher, I'm calling home to a parent to speak with them and I'm resolving that within my classroom space.
But it could have been because of a behavior or a altercation or it could have been because of a, something that disrupted it, right? It could have been a disruption, could have been.
Altercation, no, because that would go to the administrator.
But could it?
Okay, no, that's what I'm trying to clarify. That's.
Yeah. So this would be like, like, like you are not participating in class appropriately or maybe you being disruptive. You maybe made some other comments to another student. Maybe you have a teacher had to step outside in the hallway and say, hey, I want to remind you of my classroom expectations. Like, let's go in and reset. And so a kid would go in and reset, but we'd say like, I'm going to let you know that you might have this conversation today because we need to move forward in the right direction, right? So those would be things that would go in the contact log. If a student is being disruptive and needing to leave their classroom space to come to the office, then that would be something that is documented through an office referral. So that would be the difference.
Is every, every kind, when you call a teacher, what, even if it's not a disciplinary issue, when you call a parent, is it in the contact?
Yes. So there are positive. Yes, so there are positive contacts that are there and there are things that are also sometimes where corrections, there's attendance information in there. Um, there are health notes in there. So if we have a kid comes to the health office, that would be documented in the contact log too, or in the health log.
And one other thing I would ask for is I would like that breakdown between male and female in race.
Oh, sure. The, um, so if te- teachers can also text you, right, if they have a need in the classroom? So if they do that, are those texts logged and recorded anywhere?
Um, it depends on, it depends on if it, if it is something that would require removal from the space. Versus us just coming to the room and talking to the teacher and the student, that might just be a contact log and usually that would be a conversation between Mr. Williams and the teacher to say.
But would, would that necessarily go in the contact log? Like I, I'm a teacher, I've got a kid who's come out of the classroom and I text you, say, hey, you know, Johnny left the classroom. Does that go, does that go anywhere in a contact log or office referral?
It should go in the contact log and usually what we would clarify is who, like, are, if, 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 can you please reach out to mom and let them know or family and let them know? That would be the, the conversation you have and either Mr. Williams or I would. Typically, we'll ask for a CC email as well, in addition to put it into the contact log if it, if it's addressed via email versus a phone call.
I do have a broken down in suspensions, um, by male female owners.
I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Williams. Because you directly deal with these more so than you, Anna, right? I mean, no, cuz I'm, I'm just asking because what it. In my head and what it should be happening is Anna should be, we shouldn't have so many issues that. You know, Anna's principal, she should be, you know, doing her job and then that is part of what you do. But we're having, it seems like we're having so many issues and we're, we're gonna resolve them. I'm not putting any blame on anything. Is that you really are splitting that discipline. Um, what happens when? Cuz I've heard a couple of times where kids are running around or out of class. How does that, how I know, cuz I've seen you walking around and trying to, you know, mangle kids and putting them back in the class. I've actually seen you say, you know, get back to class and kids take off. And literally they're gone and you have to run and get them and put them back in. Are those kind of referrals or, or things logged in or do you just get them back to class and just kinda? Cuz I just, I just, that's just kinda stuff that is maybe IEP, you know, type things. If we needed had more paras or I'm just trying to say, think of the bigger pictures, not necessarily. Why, what is happening, but why it's happening and what resources we need. To understand exactly what's going on and then what we need to accomplish to get the, it solved. So I kinda wanna hear for, and I thought you did most of the stuff, but. Yeah, I wanna hear suggestions. I wanna hear what do you think the reason is why we're having these problems and these issues? If it's us, you know, not giving you the resources you need, I, I want you to say it. If it's administration that you have, I know you have sent some stuff. That will be implemented next year or you've asked for next year. So that may help, but I really just wanna know. What you think the problem is and how solve it. In your opinion.
What the problem is with the. We have a different reasons why that's happening.
Just get, I mean, I'm not trying to, just in general. Cuz if you don't tell us why the reasons are happening, we cannot help solve it. And if you don't give me suggestions on what, how to solve them. Then how are we gonna, you know, how are we gonna deal with it? We have to have conversation.
So I can speak to the fact that typically kids flee a classroom because they don't feel welcome in that space. They don't feel like they can learn successfully in that space. They have a pure conflict in that space. And so our job when students flee is to find out why that is so we can help them solve that problem, right? And we have a lot of kids that I would say, based on the return to school, there is heightened levels of anxiety. Um, around being in spaces. I had, you know, I have kids who say to me like, I just can't be in there today. I don't know what's wrong with me. I feel like I feel upset and sad. I have kids that are like feeling like my teachers are racist. I hear that. I hear a lot of things that kids are saying as the reasons why they don't wanna be in a classroom.
I was saying avoidance.
It's avoidance. Cuz it's uncomfortable sometimes.
But that is a real answer. That is something that you have said and. I would like, I mean, regardless if I can fix it right now, but at least it's real talk. It's, I mean, it's real.
Well, to me, the, the question then is what's next? Is sending a kid back into a classroom over and over again all day? When you think that their feelings are authentic, how is that solving anything? If you're pushing a kid back into a classroom over and over again where they feel they're subjected to racism or they feel unsafe, I, I mean.
We're not just sending them back in there.
Well, you know, if you, you, you went to it real quick and I was touched by numbers of the suspensions. Seven graders have thirty. Seventh grader to thirty seven suspension. That's a total number of students with suspension, not total number. Of suspensions. Oh, here, total number of events, middle fifty five, is that, I mean, fifty five suspensions? And thirty two suspensions, something in seventh and eighth grade.
So we clearly know where we need to provide supports.
How did it get to fifty five suspensions without having?
It's that's fifty five suspensions.
It's a total number.
Yeah, I understand that, but fine, if thirty seven students with suspension versus fifty five total suspensions. I mean, I think them, there's gotta be some, I mean, data analysis of all of these. But what is it? So I mean, Carl's asking, you know, about telling a kid back in and I look at that and, you know. Someone looks at me and they say, you're a school board member. What are you gonna do about this? How are we gonna deal with the issue? You know, do you send people? No, and, and then let me finish. You know, I, I'm not the person who's gonna say that, you know, we have to have a zero tolerance policy. Or that, you know, we have to do actual Y or Z or that we have to treat people differently, you know, without considering their certain, without considering. Their situation and the circumstance. We absolutely have to do that. Every kid is different. But I look at these numbers and honestly, at some point, someone's gotta say, how the heck do we get into this pickle? Where this is happening? Because at some point it gets more suspension because people see they're out for a couple of days and then they do it again and, you know. There aren't any expulsions, uh, 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 I, I see, I didn't see on that slide.
So this is the next slide, which is why I wanted to move to it.
But this is the, let me go back to before I got interrupted, is. You see an issue. You, I, and where's the solution? I mean, and where is the solution gonna be in the sense of? Do you need the board to give you something? Do you need support from your administrator? You have to like lay it on the line and say something and the blame game is not gonna work at this point because we all know something's wrong. And we know that there's high suspensions. Okay, we know that, that is a fact. Figuring out what to do to get those down is what the issue is. I believe that's in my personal opinion. So where is the solution on this?
The solution is the connections, the connection between adults and scholars.
Okay.
As you can see on our lower grades, we have those connections. So those are built with the teachers and those students. Is that we need better connection between our seventh and eighth grade, which are seventh and eighth graders. They see, some teachers see a bigger kid. Get a little bit different and they need some resources or maybe some support in a different way. They may not know how to give that support. So giving them the tools to support those kids. They with some of their own biases that they may have against some of those kids. I think that would be advantageous and you would see, uh, some, an decline in the suspension.
So this could go into, and I'm just gonna say the last thing, this could go into some of the issues that we were talking about with the equity committee. And some of the bias and power, bias training and some of the, um. Implicit biases that can happen and the microaggressive things that are happening. So this is just one aspect. I'm not saying this is gonna solve anything, but at least we have one thing going on. Now we can talk about somebody else. But I really wanted to, to see. That's, that could be a huge bit, that could be a small bit. That's, and then now we can go to something else that is a cause.
Can I just, I just, yes, okay, I'm, I'm sort of processing because I feel like we've. We're diving into this presentation we've asked for. We wanna have visitor participation and then we wanna have the board engagement and get, we have questions, they pop up. My understanding of why we are having this conversation tonight is because this is more urgent than our long-term plan. To aju- address just like social emotional being and the reasons why these, there are root causes. We know that will take some work. But what is urgent is the fact that what I'm hearing from students, from families, from teachers, from everybody is that. Folks do not feel safe. And that like in currently, you know, in, in the school and that there is, there are significant disruptions to learning. As a result of this. And so I wanna talk about the endgame and I wanna talk about all of that. But I also wanna make sure that we talk about. The, how we can, uh, how we can create a safe. How, how we can help more people feel safe and how we can help more people feel like their learning is not being disrupted. And, and that is an equity conversation. No, and I agree. I just don't wanna get so, I, I also wanna be present and talk about. What our goals are in the present. I don't wanna disrupt the flow that you set up in terms of presentation, visitor participation and then board engagement. And I get that we have questions as we go. I just wanna try to keep us on track.
In your, in defense of what you just said, you are, that is absolutely correct. But even if we try to bring things safe and do an action now, right now. We still have to find what is the problem to fix it. So I, I do.
Yeah.
And I think that is one of the things that we have to take care of. We can, um, I think I saw somebody saying, okay.
Um, I'm a fourth grade teacher here. Um, and I also just wanted to give a perspective from inside the classroom, um. All of us as teachers have never been students through a pandemic. And these students have, um, something that they're dealing with that none of us understand on their level. And so that's something that we are all trying to understand and. Um, not being able to put ourselves in their shoes, um, as easily as we could before the pandemic is one of the things that we're constantly working on. So, um, a lot of the things that we tried might not work because. They're dealing with things in a way that we don't understand how they're dealing with them and we're not aware of the things that are going through their head. Since these kids are in such a huge developmental stage during this pandemic and things have been so tossed up. They. Their development is different than we're used to and there's not. There aren't a lot of research-based things that are, okay, here's what you do when you have a kid who doesn't understand why they're anxious. Or why they're afraid because they weren't in a structured environment when they were supposed to be learning those things. So as staff and admin and as we're going through each of the days. We're basically getting hit with things that we have not experienced before. We're getting hit with emotions that we have experienced as adults, but that they're experiencing as kids. So we are trying to not only deal with it on our own end, but also understand where they're coming from on their end. So I think, um, that's kind of where it seems like all the things that we're doing aren't working. It's because we don't have that answer. I think anyone does and I think. That it is something that needs to be addressed and it's something that we're, we're actively working. But I think the whole, the, the social emotional piece of it and having people who are qualified to. Teach it, to implement it, to teach us how to teach it is something that we need because, I mean, I can do as much as I can in my room. But with twenty-three kids, I, I can only focus if I have a kid that's in, in a breakdown. And admin is dealing with so many other kids breaking down. Then it becomes something of a, a social emotional, which I am not qualified for. So I think that is one of our biggest struggles, um, as staff and admin is that it is completely, it is a completely different situation. Um, I've only been teaching for four years, but my mom has been teaching for thirty-five years. And she said this year was the most difficult, different, she's retiring this year. She said she has never had a year like this year.
Did she teach at me?
No, sorry, she teaches in Illinois, but she, um, said that just the overall mental health and wellbeing of kids. Is so different and is so difficult for us to understand from their perspective. So, um, just from our lens, that's where we're coming from. And I think that overall, all of the staff here and all of the admin and everything want to do what's best for the kids. We just don't know what it is. All of us have different ideas and we don't have the common time to discuss everything and hash out ideas. And just have that common time where we're able to do things because we are putting out so many of those fires that are coming up. And so that's kinda where we're at, where right now, we're just trying to support each other as much as we can. I know like we'll help other teachers, we'll sub for them, we'll grab a kid and they're having a breakdown, but you can come into my room, you can come into their room. So I think as a whole, our school is really trying to do that. It's just, we're not grasping it because we just haven't found that piece yet.
You know, I just wanted to say one thing. I believe very strongly in that, you know, I believe very strongly that there is something going on with individuals and that we need to figure out what that is. So that we can reach out and help individuals. But the problem is that right now, we are so focused in this discussion. And, and, and to be, you know, very fair to Ms. Williams and Ms. Young, Vivian, I think trying to act with restraint. You know, over the course of the year because everyone in the school is concerned about our students, about our health, you know, about issues that we. And, and I, I hate to say the point, but you know, at some point, you know, we also have to consider the collective. Because these individual needs, okay, it's still minority part and I'm not talking about race. I, I, I'm not talking about special needs. I'm talking about percentage of these kids that are causing disruptions, having impact on learning environment. And on the reputation of this school, which is a fine institution with fine administration, fine teachers and so forth. And frankly, I think that there need to be consequences in addition, by the way, to support. But I, what I, I think people see and maybe we can speak to this is we're getting suspensions, they're, they're going back. I mean, doing math, there are thirty-seven people who are suspended in seventh grade, but fifty-five events. Half of those kids are getting into repeat, uh.
When you're done, can I speak?
Yeah. I mean, so the, the, there's a repeat culture here, it looks like anyways. Like, you know, at least people are doing something more than once. I'm never gonna say gold spell kid. But I am saying, you know, there are ways of referring them for discipline that both impose that threat. And leave it up to us if necessary, which creates that big question mark or puts conditions on their return back to school. That require, you know, going through counseling or working with, uh, you know, social worker or so forth. And, you know, in addition, by the way, having, you know, trained people in the hallways, not resource officers, okay? Uh, you know, not security people. I, I don't believe those things, but certainly, and I know that we're talking about that too. Ha- having, you know, an increased presence with trained and professional, uh, with, with trained parents, with trained homeowner, whatever you have. That can kinda keep order, you know, in between. I, I just think that we need to come down on. Uh, on the side of enforcing higher standards and making sure that the threat of discipline is out there. And also re-instilling the public with confidence that we're on top of this. I know it's challenging, but I think we have to up our game and, and we have to do more. And frankly, I'm also finding the cure and for helping these kids. You know, God knows, you know, I live in this district, I support the people who attend this district, you know, I don't wanna cut anyone loose. But I also, we have to balance a little bit more in favor of disciplining those people who are, uh, engaging in this behavior. Or sending the message that in a stronger, clear way that won't be tolerated.
I just wanna, I just wanna speak to that to say, when we talk about root cause and we talk about plans. That does not mean we're not giving consequences for students. And I know that you looked at that number, but one of the other numbers that I wanna point out is that any student that has been suspended for five or more days was brought for pre-expulsion. We have had pre-expulsion hearings with students. That's not something we advertise. When there's an incident in the school, we.
When there's an incident in the school, we can't go to the community and say, next week we have two pre-expulsion hearings. Like, we just can't do that because of confidentiality. But we have had pre-expulsion hearings. We have had students come back on last chance agreements, on behavior contracts. But we have, we're talking about putting that support in place too, so that we can figure out how to address those those root cause needs. But there are definitely consequences for behaviors. So it's 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 not one of the.
Hi, uh, thank you, everybody, for being willing to listen. Uh, my question is, like, when something like.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you say your name and address?
Sorry, Ten Pan Kuchi, um, forty-nine, twenty-two North Eric Point Avenue, actually both in Parkway and Glen Hills. Um, we love our district, I'll get that out of the way, but this particular event has really changed how we're viewing this. Um, this event affected the community and I I articulated this in in the email to all of you. So I I think in this case, the community needs to know what the steps are because I couldn't find the disciplinary actions. Like all the code of conduct that that uh Ms. Young shared with us. Or what happens afterwards, like, hey, if somebody does this infraction, like, how many days out of school, like. I couldn't find that documentation on the website. Um, I couldn't find it on Infinite Campus. I want the satisfaction of knowing that something is going to be put in place to go, okay, well. You know, because when I came, was it Thursday? I can't remember now, when the event happened, I came to school. My son, who has anxiety, much like many of the students. Was freaked out. He wanted to come home. I saw students in the background crying because they were in, they were in full lockdown. Description I was given by other students, other parents, it was a full lockdown. They were freaked out. My son, as soon as I said, hey, it was a fight between two students that got out of hand, you're fine, go back to class. He was like, oh, okay, great. But now as a parent, like initially, I was like not angry about, I didn't want those students to leave. But then as I saw all the other parents that were coming in and out, the kids are crying as they were leaving. This is a community issue at this point. I feel like we 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 have the right to at least know, like, hey, here's the process of what's going on. Uh, this incident happened. I appreciated the details, uh, Ms. Young. But there was no, like, this is the next step of what's happening. We're sorry, you just. You know, you had to do this, you know, we have to go through this. I don't need names. I don't even know gender. I don't even know race. I just need to know that when I send my son back to school. And an incident happens, like another lockdown, am I gonna have to come here again? See him completely freaked out, scared to death, kids crying again. And not be able to tell them, like, what's next? Like, he asked me the other night, what is happening? What what happens to those kids now? I can't answer him because I don't know.
So I I do have a couple of questions that. Has concerned me on this. And my first question is, and I want, I've read this, but I'm still not. This happened and started with two kids fighting, correct? There was just two kids fighting. Now, from what I understand in all this, they were fighting, you were trying to split them up. Kids do what they do and they go fight, fight. They're all yelling and chanting, but there was still only two kids initially in this fight. Okay, then, as I understand. I need to figure out, and this is the thing that concerns me. Is from this, even though it was, you know, a big ordeal where they were all saying fight, no kid was fighting. Like besides these two. And I think, and my issue is, and I don't know what exactly happened. But the lockdown, this verbiage, this wording triggered all of this. And that triggered, now it shouldn't have been a lockdown. It should have been, get your butts to class, you know, hurry up. Teachers may should have come down and helped disperse. Administrators should have come down and helped disperse. Because as far as I understand, still, there was only two kids involved.
I would, I would personally like to have, I would like to be walked through the incident, like a timeline. I would like to sort of know what happened and then. How the response was formulated, how you, how you debriefed it, how you addressed like the response, like that would be accountability. That would help us understand. How we got here. I mean.
I think it's.
Because, because the one.
Weren't there, right?
Because the one.
This was, this was.
Because the one thing that I wanted to get to the point is, is that sometimes. Sometimes the actions of adults. Manifests in kids and they are super scared now because of a word that we have put in there and they're. Extremely scared. Now, you as a parent said you kind of told them it was just between two people having a fight. And he kind of, his anxiety went down a little bit because dad told me that it was okay. But number one, if that's not communicated to you, to say that it's just one fight and you are up here, how are you gonna say that to your kid? Secondly, I want to go back to what Danielle said is, understand. Did we pull all the kids into a big, huge assembly and say, you know what? This is what happened yesterday. This was not something that we should. Own up to your mistakes if we we made the wrong mistake. Own up to us using the wrong verbiage.
We went classroom to classroom and did that. That's exactly.
So can you, I think, can we start, Mr. Williams, you are, you were the first person on the scene, correct?
Administrator on the scene.
So can you explain at least what happened? Cause I know Ms. Uh Young was not there. Is that what I think I, and we'll make this.
I can, yeah, I can go through it very quickly.
Yeah.
But I received a call from a a teacher that stated that um there was students in the hallway. However, I was in a meeting and I could not uh address the situation. Uh, Ms. Young was out, so Ms. Westfall was able to get downstairs and she was the one that responded to that call.
Can I ask a question right there?
Yes.
Did the teacher, shh, like, kind of say, look, this is getting out of hand, or she just said she needed assistance? So the urgency, there was no urgency there at that point?
Because it was students in the hallway, not because it was a fight or a wrong thing.
And I just want, you know, everything you are pointing out right now is what we debriefed on.
Okay.
To practice.
Right, but we, let's keep going.
And so Ms. Westfall entered the space, she saw two students arguing. Uh, she escorted one student away, but another student that was sitting in an argument was urged by other students to respond. To what that first student was saying and pushed Ms. Westfall out of the way.
So this one student, okay, so we're right there. Keep going.
That's good, I went into the hallway. The let the teacher that called for assistance because something, it was too many kids in the hallway. Got involved in this uh fight, trying to break it up with Ms. Westfall. And then that's when another call came over the radio, when I came downstairs, that's when everyone came upstairs pretty much. And that's when students were in the hallway surrounding the fight. And when we got there, that's when we got all the kids back into the classroom and the.
Did you have?
Two students, two students were separated.
Did you have an issue when you got down there? By the time you and the other administration administrators got down there, did you have an issue dispersing the kids?
No.
But once you got down there, you were, within a couple of minutes, you were able to get them to where they needed to go.
Uh, but the issue was. Issue was we had kids in different places around the building. Uh, that were running around because kids who had saw what happened downstairs, came upstairs. And there was a lot of students in a lot of places where they shouldn't have been. At that point, Mr. Fletcher had part of one, uh, the one student who was involved in the fight, or brought them upstairs to the office. The other student went their separate way. Student that was in the office with Mr. Fletcher. Needed their personal items and left the office and. Ran out the office and went through, went through the building, running around the building.
And then what happened?
That's when uh. We had a conversation over the walking, over the phone, did we need to call the police? Call a lockdown. I said, I said enough, uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Wise and Ms. Holloway. I said, no, we do not need to have a lockdown. We'd be kids going to their classrooms. Do you just close their doors? I don't know.
Somewhere in there, the communication was missed. No blame, I'm just saying.
Yes.
There was a communication where you said no, but somehow you saying. Get the kids in the classroom and close the doors turned into getting the classroom like the door is locked there.
Yes.
Or an interpretation of that. Not, I'm not giving any blame. Okay, now contin- can you continue? Where is that?
That's pretty much.
Okay.
My next question then, based on that, is Ms. Westfall, who's a wonderful human being, was assaulted. In high school I went to, the police were involved immediately. You struck some, you struck one of the teachers, you struck another student. There was immediately a police officer involved because that's this, that's an assault.
We have a policy that is just makes it discretionary.
It was, it's up to the person, if if she wanted to file a, you know, with the police and because. In her opinion, the students were going for each other and she was in the middle. She didn't feel they were assaulting her, so she made the decision not to do that.
But did I hear there were four staff members that were struck? And the letter.
So you had, correct me if I'm wrong, but based on the statements, so we have to collect statements on all this, so. Yes, I was not there, but you're looking at multiple statements that people that were students, teachers who were there. Um, all of those things, looking at all those pieces. Um, my understanding, Ms. Westfall took the front of. The one student going towards the other one who was in 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 pathway, so she got hurt as this Woodward came into that. And tried to assist this Westfall in separating them. This Woodward also received some roles as the students were exchanging roles with each other. And then one of our other teachers got pushed up against a wall because of the crowding that was happening there. And then I believe also that um.
And she got dealt open in the face because she was trying to separate the students.
But the thing is, and just go back and and go on making the name, Pannacucci?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure I, right. So going back to the Pannacucci point, though, is there's contact. Now. I will tell you, I, someone accidentally tried to someone, okay. If I'm trying to punch another kid and, well, not me, but I guess the the child may try to punch another kid. That is an adult, but if a kid tried to punch another kid and accidentally hits the wrong person. They intentionally tried to hit someone or they're doing something to act up, but the teacher ends up being caught in crossfire. I absolutely believe with a hundred percent certainty that any kid who struck a teacher. In this school has, I I'd like to believe it anyways, had no intention of striking a teacher. Or a staff member, whatever. I, you you don't even need to dwell on that point. But there's still the impact. The second that that teacher is hit, the teacher feels unsafe. Whether or not the teacher feels the criminal matter or not, or has a depression or something, that teacher's been affected. And that kid's been affected because that kid doesn't have consequences, and I don't know, and and I recognize that. But I'm just saying that kid has learned that when that kid has struck another uh person, and this time an adult with authority. And come back to school, and again, I'm not saying that they don't deserve to come back to school, but I am saying that, you know, other people. Have learned that they have a shot at doing the same thing without consequence to them. So even if there's a second chance agreement and 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 even if there's really not a repeat offender issue. Other kids are seeing that. And again, that 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 permeates the atmosphere, that conveys to teachers, it conveys to parents. That, you know, the people are getting hit and that this perpetuates itself. And again, it goes back to. And this is where it gets tricky, you know, our job is board and 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 part of difficulty of this conversation is. It's really up to Ms. Wise, it's really up to Ms. Young to be on the ground and figure out the individual circumstances. And to make the best recommendation. And unless it comes for an expulsion referral, okay, the board really shouldn't be in. The process of resolving any individual issue. The reason why I'm talking about now is, we we we've had, and again. Nationwide, um, we we've had a year of increasing issues. We've had some very high-profile incidents within our schools. And we're trying to determine what the best policy is here and how to address it. And, you know, I I whether or not the board had to take action or not. I really strongly feel like, you know, we have to take, again, just a notch towards. At least the threat of greater consequences, doing something to, you know, communicate to the student and then also to the teacher, the staff. And the public, you know, that is, that is not gonna be tolerated because I I don't. I know, I know what this school is made of. I know what Ms. Young trying to do. I damn well know what Ms. Williams is trying to do. And to be frank, it sounds like I'm not lauding them for, you know, being, you know, in the trenches on some of these things. They are, and they know better than me what's going on. But from my point of view, I can't help but think we need to just. Turn the notch a little bit more and see what happens. And also communicate more to parents, have regular updates, you know. Go through and and mine the data and and see what works and what doesn't work.
So I have two things to say about that. Number one. Projection. Ms. Westfall may not feel scared. You're projecting that she feels scared because this is may how you feel after you've been hit. But maybe, and I'm not saying I know what Ms. Westfall feels or not, but she may not feel scared. She may understand the the situation. She put herself in, like, by trying to help out. She knows the students. She may not feel safe. But she may not not feel safe. But do you understand what I mean? So I think it's in the the gist of. What the teacher is going to decide for themselves. I I I really feel that sometimes, but you're also. I am sympathetic to pipeline of prison. Um, it's just who I am, it's part of my culture, I mean, my nature and who I am. Um. If we can't deal with school issues that are discipline issues and we are using criminal. Um, law to engage with sixth, seventh and eighth graders. I have an issue with that. Maybe we can, we have to figure it out because some of this stuff is, and I'm sorry, but I'm fifty. And so back in in the day, kids had fights just as much as they have them here. And I went to Charlotte, so I didn't go to some hood red school. This is the prim of North Shore. But they still had the same fight. They still got suspended. They still did what they had to do. But it wasn't police call all the time. You either got in-school suspension or out-school suspension. There was different varieties of different ways. Hell, I had an in-school suspension one because I whooped somebody's butt. But with that being said. We can't, we have to figure out a way to work on the discipline problem, whether behavioral problem. Without adding to the problem of criminalizing childlike behavior.
Not criminalizing child.
If you have a a regular fight, how many have, kids have fights all the time, but if you are going to. Give them a ticket and put them in jail for a fight, we, why can't we?
I'm not a advocate for that. I staunchly believe that we should be calling the police unless a teacher really believes that, unless something.
We're jumping to like the end of a conversation when we haven't even really fully understood what has happened. Like, I I I'm trying to just think about where the.
I think I'm.
Can insert itself in this.
For me, analyzing what happened.
Yes.
To get to that part, but that happened right there. So it might not be your process, but it it really is part of. My process to see what happened, what they did, why they did it. So in my way of thinking, to get to what we need to do tomorrow.
Right, this feels like we're talking like philosophy to, and and I want to understand. What happens and understand what policies and practices are implicated by what happened, so that we can then assess what those policies.
And making for saying that, but I have a different way of.
I know, I, okay, I'm just, I'm, I, yes.
I mean, I need something that is different from what you, your policy practices. I need to look at it a different way. I mean, I need something that is different from what you, your policy practices, I need to look at it a different way. We can still go back to yours, but I need to figure out my way too, just like you do.
And we've talked about this, I think this is more than one conversation, this is a larger conversation that I wanna keep having. And, and some of these bigger conversations are like, you know, are more about philosophy and values and, and culture, but in order for these conversations to be productive, I, I just feel like I need to understand what are we trying to talk about and address tonight? Are we looking at what happened and assess, like, I, I'm just, I'm feeling a little disjointed, which is partially me personally.
The whole conversation that we're having started out with just trying to figure out what happened that day. Cause this is just a discussion item, there is no recommendations I have here, there is no plan of action. We really just wanted to hear what the heck happened.
Yes, I would like to hear more from the people here, instead of us arguing up here.
Okay, but she didn't say he was done though.
And I could, like, I.
But we were gonna move to visitor participation after.
The two people answered, they rose their hands and nobody else rose their hand. And now he has a different question, but before he answers.
No, it's not a, it's not a question, it's a statement.
Or a statement.
We love Glen Hills, we love Parkway, we love the district. But this particular incident is how good school districts start turning into bad school districts. And if, if the community doesn't feel, and, and it's true, and, and it's terrible to think this way, but if they don't feel good about how we respond to this, you're going to get an exodus of the families that want to be in this district. We, we particularly chose Glen Hill because it was diverse. We particularly chose to stay in public schools because we thought they were great schools. The first time in, I don't know, my son's a fifth grader, I don't know how many years that is. We are considering leaving the school district because we don't know if this is working anymore. And I, I think, well, I know I'm not the only parent thinking that. So that's just my final thought on it, like, I, I do appreciate everything everybody's doing, but it's easy for me to just leave the school district, I, I don't want to, my email said, I wanna participate, but if I can't get the support of, uh, the board, the administration, to see something happen in regards to something that affected the entire community. And I know no details about the individuals involved. So I can one little slip up on a, on a pronoun, I had no clue, I don't care. All I know is I came to my son's school with a packed family of parents and guardians, kids crying in the background in the look of the R M S. This incident is not a typical fight, this incident was not a typical situation. We know all of these things, we, I went to a school where fights were happening every day as well. It, it is part of just, there's hormones involved, it happens, kids, kids fight. I accept that, I have no problem with that, but this particular incident spread beyond them and.
And that's where I think when we talk about moment between, not after, but kinda after the fight, that procedure from there up until closing that door is where our discussion really needs to hit.
Well, I think that, they also think it's what happened after, because, you know, my.
That's what I'm saying, from there up.
Yeah, from there up, yeah, you know, there were interesting responses to people from what I've been told within school. And that's another part of the problem.
What does the policy say?
I was gonna say that leads to Danielle's question about po- policy and practice, and that's what we've talked about. We have a district safety plan that's from two thousand thirteen. So clearly, that's a big job that needs to be done. And then we have a building safety plan that was in place and literally it was a language difference between two different names for a drill that caused the situation that it caused. And so we met as a team and we debriefed every single thing you're talking about. We talked about when you're on the walkie-talkie, what are the words you need to use if it's an urgent call? What is the team that needs to respond? Those are all the things the principals are working with the staff on right now. Uh, where do you want me to start? Uh, we came up with the conclusion that that safety plan needs to be shared with staff, the building one. That they need to know exactly what's in it, exactly who responds.
I'm gonna interject, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
At the beginning of the.
And over and over again now.
And as we have looked at every drill that we've done, it goes back to staff that's, it's in the document that I've shared. And so, um, I also want to talk about the fact that we started this school year with looking at a mental health crisis team um, that we worked on, um, that we would respond because we anticipated students needing that, those supports this year. And what we're finding is that we need a general crisis response team, so we did switch out some numbers just based on comfort level. So that moving forward, that our staff would have a clear call for a crisis response team to assess the situation. It is super unfortunate that, and I'm gonna say to you as an adult who works with kids, when you see kids in peril and in danger, you step in because you care about them deeply. But like, all of the crisis response training that we do here at, at, at Glen Hills, the training at Ivanation outside Glen Hills, the first thing you do is assess the situation to determine whether or not you can manage it or not. And so if you're in a situation, Miss Westfall walked in, she thought that she could manage the situation because she had one student who was being cooperative and following her direction. And another student did something that was not predictable, right? And that can happen. And so when you get into a situation like that, Miss Westfall was in a tough spot, but then we had another adult who came in, who at that point, because of the crowd, should have radioed for help before getting in. But you act in that moment, I'm not blaming anyone, but that is all training opportunities that our staff needs in order to be able to respond to crisis. Cause you have to know what to do, and you have to protect yourself first, because we have to be standing to deal with possible consequences, right? And so one of the things that, that I think is really important to understand is, anytime, and I've worked in schools for twenty years, and I've worked at some schools that what happened here the other day was nothing compared to what I dealt with, right? So I just wanna be really clear about the fact that when you're in those kind of situations, they never present themselves the same way. So it is important for our staff to understand what those procedures are, it's important to staff to keep a level head in those procedures because they have some comfort what to go to, but it's never gonna be like it is in a drill. And so people responded and mistakes were made the other day, and those mistakes had huge impacts on the community. But I think what, what I, I want to clarify, and, and Tim, what you're talking to me about breaks my heart. I had personal conversations with kids who were scared, who felt uncomfortable in this space, and it's a space where they should feel comfortable, and, and that is, is not okay. I guess where I get, I, I, I see this piece of the bridge is, what happened with those teachers and the kids isn't what caused the lockdown, what's a lockdown was caused because there was a miscommunication between adults. And so that, I think we just have to be really clear that, 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 that level of fear about your, that your kids experienced was a miscommunication between adults, and that the behaviors that took place between students were inappropriate. They are being handled, there are consequences being issued, but they are not atypical for, for kids at this age. And it's, and it's super unfortunate. And we have to do a better job regulating that, so yes, my staff will be sitting with us on Friday, we'll be talking about radio calls, we'll be reviewing protocols with them. I've been meeting with teams this week, I have a student expectation committee that's been meeting since April to talk about what these behaviors are, how do we define better what behaviors are, how do we define better what our response is so that that can be predictable for our students and for our parents? How do we clearly define what the expectations are in the library, in the hallway, in the bathroom, in the gym, outside? Because a lot of that, a lot of those pieces were not pieces that were in place here when I came. Those aren't markers of a well-run school, but it's also collaborative work. So the immediate fix on this is how do we tighten up our procedures for the remainder of this year? How do we continue to define all those behaviors so we have that laid out next school year and we are ready to rock and roll when we walk through the doors that we can teach those expectations explicitly to kids, that teachers have a strong understanding of them, and that we are all as a school community holding ourselves accountable to that. My understanding is that this building has been dealing with many of the issues that we're seeing this year, overall height this year and many years previous. It's going to take time to remedy this problem, it is not an overnight problem, because like it's been alluded to in the data, there are, our African-American world are clearly at a disadvantage, do not get rid of our space, and we have work to do around that. Our teachers, our administrators, our staff that works with kids needs to examine their bias and how they see behavior and how they respond to it and how they interact with kids. It is not an easy, it, it isn't something that just unravels if you have an answer there. And so I, what I can say is that there's a commitment that the staff that works here wants to fix this. They are willing to engage in the work to do so, you have two administrators who are diligent in that work to get there. But I have laid out the work that we're currently doing right now, I have laid out the work that we intend to do. I am meeting with family advisory counselor, so there are things that are in place to move this forward. So I guess, I don't know, you know, if the board has something that you want between now and the end of the year that you would like to see, and as if you review the work that's currently in progress and what's coming, that you say there's, there's something you're missing here and there's something that we see would be impactful that isn't there, I wanna be open to those suggestions so that we know how to get that in the books.
So just follow up on that, and, and let me just add a couple very quick questions first, because, I mean, there's definitely something I think that we need to do and it's kind of something on our general timeline, that is reviewing and updating the safety plan. So just with respect to that, I guess, a couple things, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to understand who are the staff we're gonna be responsible for certain things, so in our history, what happened in our building, the grounds administrator was responsible for putting a safety plan together, and so now going forth, without building the grounds administrator to do that, is that something that is going to be, and, and how do we kind of publicly acknowledge that? Is it gonna be your task to coordinate Lindsay?
I'm sorry, she's done it before.
So, Ms. Johnson, that's wonderful then, so it'll be yours, it, it's gonna fall in your lap, you're gonna be able to coordinate, so we know the person that's gonna, you know, lead that. Second question I had is, how are staff kind of identified as, you know, uh, I don't know, I know there's a safety committee, I know there's staff that implement, uh, things when, you know, be, be called on lock and talk here, implementing safety plan, whatever, how are those people assigned? Are they seeing people year after year, do, you know, do we shake it up? I, I, because, well, I mean, I just sit down as president, right? I mean, sometimes change is good, it's in our value, the change is not only for growth. Do we rotate people on safety committee so that we have fresh voices?
Right. So when that team was comprised over this, at the start of the school year, we really looked for people, we had, we had new staff coming in, so we made some strategic decisions around that, and staff to know the building, okay, it's no responses. Um, we also took a look at making sure that, um, Miss David Crager was a part of the response team that we had, and Miss Davis and, and Dr. Reverie gives us follow-up because they're not always in our building, but they would help follow up with those things, so there's some strategic moves there. Also thinking about staff that sometimes aren't necessarily with, um, they have more flexibility. So our special education teachers, a lot of the time are, are able to respond in different ways because they're in classrooms where they're co-teaching, so there's already a teacher in there, so it's easier for them to step away to call, does that make sense? And, and oftentimes, if we're dealing with students with disabilities, having somebody who has the knowledge about disabilities is really important because they can, they can help understand some things and have some strategies in those situations.
Well, I think you cannot, we're gonna, we're gonna have to table this discussion because we, we have a lot more. What I think we should do is, um, and I will ask this, since you are buildings and ground, the safety protocols should go through buildings and ground committee with whoever that's in, and they start working on that. And you tweak that, build that, at least for now, to start that.
Do you wanna share the timeline?
Well, no, I feel like I would like to see this be like a regular update to the board, like you've got a lot of work in place.
Okay, sorry.
I was just, I have her moving on it, so.
No, I wanted her to give the timeline, sorry.
So I just asked, when we all collaborated and talked, uh, I, I'd like to have something updated by July fifteenth and then I want input from the teachers, principals, and everybody, so I'm, I'm starting the groundwork of it and I will have it up to them.
And I can bring it to building.
So this is the next step, is that each, because this is, we need to have an update on what is going on in every single board meeting to a point until we get this done. So as you do the work for buildings and grounds, you might wanna give an update there, it might not be anything to, like a policy, actually a policy, but you wanna give that, that input to the board as you're working through. I, I would suggest that, uh, Ms. Young, as you're working through your list here, tell us what, what is working right now and what is not working and you had to adjust. And then what feedback are you getting from parents as well as teachers as well as students? Because I think you need to ask the students as well what is going on, you can't just leave them out of this. So any other suggestions?
Just a quick question, because I, you know, I don't know how many of you, so we, we used to have a guy here who would be in these sort of situations all the time, and he was phenomenal, Michael Craver, right? Have we ever considered, like, like, is there, is there someone in his position?
That's it.
He was like an administrative assistant and he knew everyone.
He knew everybody, and I actually brought that up to Anna and to, I think, somebody else, I think I was talking to Mr. Williams, where there, that, Mr. Crager, one of the things Mr. Crager did so well is he knew all the students. He had a connection with students and he knew everybody, like, and he could sometimes stop stuff from happening, just because he was in the hall.
So, yeah, and I, I mean, I was a student here, I remember him, you know, and he knew me and then I knew him as a professional too. And, you know, I saw him break up a fight in five seconds. You know, and it's, he's gonna be, I mean, you can't replace him, but maybe you could find someone that maybe fills that hole a little bit.
See, I think we need to have someone like that or to have a homeowner, because I think that we still need to answer questions this year. And that question is, what can you tell the community you've done to make school safer this year? You know, how can you say we implemented something, either the first step or, you know, something that can be home run? I wanna be able to say, this is what we're doing. And I think that there's some great suggestions, and, you know, you nailed a bunch of them. I'm just worried that we're not going to be focusing too much on getting people in until next year, because I think right now there's still three weeks left to school, and yes, it's only three weeks, I really don't wanna write off this year. Yeah, well, I really don't wanna write off this year, you know, I, I would love to get someone else.
I mean, what I can, what I can say to you is that May is, May is, May is a, is a chunky time, and, and your two colleagues came in and watched what we're doing is, I'm right now, from, I, I would say pretty much the whole month of May, end of April, middle of May, I'm not in meetings, I'm not at my desk, I'm doing all of my other work in the evening because I'm on the floors of this building, walking in every single day, and so with Mr. Williams, and we are present for every single transition so that we can make sure that we're safe. And I am, I am like relentless with it right now because we don't have that additional support, and that's what I have to do for the next three weeks, is what I have to do for the next three weeks, because I care about the kids who go to school here.
So do you think?
But when you're gone, who does that? Should somebody be doing that in their set of their?
So, 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 so like, for example, I, I was ill, right? Like, I was really ill.
Not that you can't imagine.
Yeah, so I, I mean, you, we have, we have some folks that can come up and, and underfill, but the perennial problem this year has been that, we also have other staff who are ill. We heard, it's always that cycle, so it's always recovery and basis, right? So there are other staff that have administrative licenses, you can step into that work when, when one of us are not present.
And everybody in the administration has a license, why, I mean, if she's gone, can you step in, can Jenica step in, can other people?
I saw Jennifer in the halls.
Well, I know, yeah, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, so the day that she was out, we had two teachers with their licenses, and then we just pretty much supported transitions and lunchrooms on top of that and connected with those.
You were in, in the working.
We were working the hall.
So do you think?
Transitions are the biggest time.
Do you think hiring someone to fill Michael's old role, do you think that would help?
Well, we have a plan to hire two people.
I thought it was three.
Three, sorry.
One to watch cameras and two.
Two are always once.
But that's different to me, what I'm hearing about this is.
But that's different to me, what I'm hearing about this is, I don't know, so. They're being hired to forge relationships, they're being hired to monitor hallways, or will that be part of?
Yeah, to forge relationships, to have training and de-escalation strategies, to work with the student support team, that entire piece.
But this guy was, he was everywhere, you know, he was at the buses, he was in the lunchroom.
I, since we're here and you're seeking input, I'm just gonna say it here then. Because the theme that I see here, of course, you'll say, but I think it's a real theme, is is an absence of strong SEL expertise. Where it needs to be, when it needs to be, right? So even Thursday morning, as an ELE teacher and Allison were walking from classrooms that should have been handled by an SEL person. An expert who understands anxiety and what stress responses in children look like. And we all think we know, I've been advocating around this for ten years, I don't know, I would not put myself in a classroom doing that. Uh, it, I'm just not the expert, we need SEL staff front footed on this. And that's, I hear you saying the same thing, you can't ask teachers to manage stress responses from kids, they need training. They need SEL support, you need guidance and expertise, I saw something that Denise Davis sent out to teachers afterwards. I I was, it was great, I read it and I thought, oh, this is advice I could have used as a teacher, you know, use this word, don't use that word. Look at children through this lens, that sort of guidance for teachers is what I see as absent this year. And I see SEL staff marginalized in this response, I'd really like you to do some introspection around that. You know, I'm not judging, I'm just saying it happens, especially as you're just sort of fighting to to respond to things. But I, you know, I kinda keep notes, like where could expert SEL staff have been embedded in this story? And made a big difference, not just for students, but for teachers and for you, to give you the support you need. So you're not scrambling after the fact like, oh, maybe I could have handled this differently. Because you're burned up, because you're tired, because you don't know how to respond, you know? And so I just keep seeing that story repeating itself, Mr. Crager was like an SEL staffer in some ways, right? He was doing that, he was, and he had the time and space to do it, right? Because that was kind of his role, he's building relationships, seeing students, right? Why could he break up a fight, he had that, that baseline to understand, just like to know the kids, right? See them where they are, that individual in front of him, right? And you just can't ask teachers to do that with twenty-three, twenty-seven students in a class, there's not that space for it. You can't ask Willie or Anna to do it, running around trying to throw five hundred kids back into classrooms. So I I would just encourage administrators to think deeply. Um, you know, we spend a lifetime talking about equity, SEL is an equity question, right? It's at the root of, the root of SEL intervention is equity, right? If you're gonna ask teachers to introspect about whether they're bringing implicit bias or racism into the classroom. You you need an SEL expert there to help them on that journey. You know, it can't be one of you, you're not SEL experts, I I mean, we all are in some de facto way, right? We're human beings, but that's what I would encourage you to think about, I think we all want the same thing. We have these different, you know, it's like shooting a cancer at the heart of things, you know, you send radiation from different directions. But we're we're all coming at the same thing, but I I don't think we, I think you're, you're asking too much of yourselves. You know, you need experts to come in with you, and you know, that's a staffing problem, I know it's a lot of things, but I'm happy to talk with you about it, you know? And I think we need to grow together on it.
Can I ask you a question? When you talk about that part, the, and I, this is what I don't know, aren't the. What is Mia and?
Counselor.
Aren't the counselor, but you're saying, like, a way, separate from the counselor and the social worker.
They have the expertise, but where were they Thursday morning, was Steve Tilly called over here to help? Denise was at Parkway in the morning, was 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 Wednesday afternoon, what were SEL staff embedded in that? Reaction and in planning for the next day.
So you're not saying we actually need another person, we need to utilize the people that we have?
At least we have to use the people we have effectively, until then. Yeah, what's the point of adding more people if they're not effectively embedded, right? From the beginning, right? And I think about suspensions too, when kids are suspended, when disciplinary actions are taken. Our SEL staff embedded right from the beginning in that story, and would that make a difference in outcome, right? As parents, I know, Tim, I suspect if you have a child who suffers with anxiety and deals with those challenges, would make a difference, right? To know that in this story of suspension and discipline and behavior control, SEL staff are right there at the beginning. Working with kids facing behavior challenges, as opposed to two principals running around the house, putting out fires, right? So we have expert staff working with kids who are facing behavior challenges. Uh, you know, a social worker to navigate with their family, a school counselor to work with them in school, you know? Whatever all those different pieces of it are, I mean, that's a long conversation. It would make me feel better to know that that process is in place. As opposed to kinda crisis response, because the house is burning down. That's what I would love to see in any plan you put together, whether it's procedure or policy.
So I think we have a couple of takeaways from here, um, number one, safety. Safety policy update next month, taking some of the advice that. Ms. Carla gave and implementing that into your, your policy.
For the update, I would just like to to clarify, because we talked about it about Anna's plan, but I'd like that update to include behavior, like so that. The board is being kept in the loop on what behaviors are looking like, like along with the plan.
So that there's an improvement between like today.
I know it's not gonna have, I know the next board is not, I'm just sure. But I just think that right now, that there's information coming from various areas and I'd rather have it coming from you guys, to be honest.
Well, or, sure. Typically on like a monthly basis, like if we're looking, if we're looking at the work that that the scholar expectation committee is working through, right? And and looking at refining our processes and thank you Carla for what you said, because I agree with you very much. That 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 intervention up here needs to happen before we get here, right? And and I I very much am in agreement with you and so making sure that those processes about what happens when we we start to see stuff is in place. But I think the biggest thing is we typically look at, um, on a monthly basis, what are referrals that you like? Where are they coming from, what grade levels, what teachers, like where do we need to support? Are there any suspensions, obviously, um, we wanna look at interventions that are in place. And then we also would probably wanna look at like location in the building, because that's at time. Because that gives us some really good ideas about how we can tighten up structures and where we need extra supervision. So on a monthly basis, we could provide the board with that kind of information going forward.
I mean, you also have last chance agreements, behavior plans, I mean, it's like to help us gain an understanding of how we are actually addressing. Like how you're putting our policies into practice, that's what I wanna understand.
I was gonna add to that, on the monthly piece, there would have to, it'd have to be closed, but we could at least provide the board. Here are pre-expulsion hearings we have, here are people that are in behavior contracts, because that couldn't be open, but that would be something. But that would be, in a lot of districts, they do a closed session with the board to just share.
Right, I just feel like this is a larger conversation and. Through the updates into the behavior plan, things may be implicated, that would indicate board work or reports to committees. And we can refine that process, but as long as it's not going in conversation, or we can keep dialoguing and understanding.
And we talked about putting that in place, just in general, like what are pieces that are every month for?
So are we gonna consider trying to fill right our Michael's position or not?
I think that is gonna be. Three positions now, one of those that they are gonna be bringing in, I think one of those positions could be that. But they already have three that she, uh, Ms. Young has already asked for.
Can we define it as that?
Yeah, uh, we're gonna take, it's your last question and then we really do have to move on, it's nine o'clock and we have, we just went through one of our agenda items.
Um, I was just gonna add on, so, um, all these things that we've been talking about, we've been, um, in these meetings and working towards implementing them. And the thing that the staff, um, is concerned about is. When are we going to have the time to do this? And that's one of the biggest reasons why we talked about the, um, having that time bi-weekly. Or something like having our one hour once a month is not, does not allow us to look at all of our information. And talk as teams and be able to talk it through and do it with validity. Because there, it's happening in such frequent times that we need that extra time, um, to discuss that. And I don't know what the final decision on that, um, was when it was brought up before, but that's something that we.
It's a whole day once a month, are you talking about professional development dates?
Just, I know that there was something at one meeting talking about like every other Wednesday or every other something.
Actually an agenda item.
It turned us. Okay, well, so that, that's something that we feel, right, but have the. That's where we can put these practices in, because like this week, I have not had a single day with my team. Because we are either subbing or dealing with kids or meetings and things like that. So having that is something huge that the entire staff has, would really benefit from. And we you, we would be able to put all these things that you're saying into place in that time.
And I just have one question, and this may be, can we call? A day closed for this exact thing, if it is. I'm just asking, like, we don't have, they're not having time right now to to do any kind of collaboration, to do it. Can we close for one day and just have this kid?
This year?
Yeah, even this year, because all this stuff is planned for next year, we have time next year to do it. But our teacher is saying that even as we are talking right now, she, as much as we're giving all this information, she doesn't even have time. We don't have space or time.
And it needs to be not just my fourth grade team, I need to be able to talk with the fifth grade team. And I need to be able to talk with admin and specials and the sped team and really have those purposeful conversations. Because when we have those squeezed in conversations, even when we do have some time that we can talk about it. There needs to be like an agenda that we have at each one of these and having a consistent time for that and having a purposeful meeting where. This is what you're talking about, these are the points that you're talking about, let's revisit this at this time. So that it becomes more of a purposeful discussion instead of just throwing around ideas and not really becoming a solution. And so I think having that available for the staff would show the staff that we are being supported. As well as, you know, we have all these things that we're trying to implement and that we're trying to do. And a lot of times we feel like it's not being seen and we are trying all these different things. But we're also, you know, putting off all of our other work until after school or we're staying here. Or we're doing it during our lunchtime or our prep time and things like that. So as far as like speaking on behalf of the staff, um, it would go a long way to. Have the support of the board to have that time for us to work with this and have you guys trust. That as educators, that we can take what you guys have been telling us and we can work together in order to get to a spot. Where we all want to be in a safe place, in a place where all of our students are able to learn. And I think that the staff here all want that, we just are so exhausted and drained. And having it even, you know, at the end of the day, I can barely even keep my thoughts together. Like I wanna have a fresh go at it where I could really put forth the effort that is needed. And the effort that the kids need, because these kids need our help, they need us. It can't just be one person who's walking around and being that person, it has to be all of us. So I think if we are given the tools and the time to create that for our staff. Then it doesn't have to be one person going around, it could be all of us, but we have to have the time to do that and it's not gonna be done in one year. It's gonna take time and it's gonna be one of those things where the board has to trust the staff. The staff has to trust the board that we're all going towards the same goal, but we have to give each other time to do that. And in the grace and understanding that we're gonna mess up. But we are still using you guys as support and help to guide us. So that we can do it while we're in here with the students, because it's very different to talk about it with adults who can have those conversations. And then actually being in the middle of it and having these kids break down crying in your arms. Like, but my whole brain and all my strategies goes right out of my head, because I've got this kid crying in my arms. So I think the staff really, really, um, wants to be trusted. And feel trusted by the board, that we are trying these things, that admin is trying, I mean. I can't even, I don't even know when Anna sleeps, like there are just so many things that she does that it's just insane. And, um, so there are so many teachers here that have meetings every single morning. I mean, I had a meeting every single morning this week, I've got stuff after every single day and so I think just. We're running on gas, like we are just, we are just trying to get through and we don't wanna have it be, oh, we're just trying to survive for the end of the year. Like I wanna keep those relationships with my kids, my kids are fourth grade, they're gonna be here through eighth grade. I wanna be that person for them that they can come back down to and talk to. But you have to give us that time and that, um, the the people to help. Us become that, because we don't have that training.
Right, so. But, but it's, it goes back and forth, because it's like we can't wait till next year, but then we only have three weeks to school. It's like, it's the give and take of, what do we do right now? Um, and what do we do to plan for next year? But then you go back and say, but what is gonna happen between the three weeks? But it goes back and forth, and do we take a day to just figure out what our plan is? Or do you try to implement something? But how are you gonna train or educate them? This may be a special session meeting that we might have to have, it might be something, but I think we need to, you, in administration.
Can I just clarify, I just wanna make sure I'm hearing, I'm hearing you, I hear the call for a long time, I hear issues and subbing also taking away your time. But when you first spoke, you said that teachers are not, no one really understands what it's like to be in these kids' shoes. And therefore the strategies you have don't work, so when I hear that, I hear that you need help with strategies addressing the situation. So then I hear Carla in my head who says, we have this SEL team that has the strategies. And so, uh, is it fair to to say that you are looking for support from like SEL experts? To give you strategies to deal with what's going on now, is that fair to say that's part of your ask?
Yeah, that would be wonderful, just giving us realistic things that we can realistically use in the classroom. It in, for the next three weeks, for things for the next three weeks, because it's gonna be different than at the beginning of the school year. When you're starting fresh and you have those opportunities, but I think as far as if we're looking for the next three weeks. That we need some strategies and we need some things that are going to help us for that short time.
Okay, so then I have two takeaways in terms of then, it's still, I still question the response to what happened. And we understand there was trauma, folks had feelings, then I still wanna know more about how you processed, how we responded and how we're looking at that. How that factors into this request for SEL support from staff in dealing with our students. But also I hear a call for SEL support, just as a teacher who's burnt out trying to deal with this.
Yeah, it wasn't, I mean, the, the incident, like. Do I ever wanna be in a lockdown? No, do I ever wanna have my kids feeling that way? No. Were there steps that were maybe lost in communication? Yes, but there, that is, that wasn't like a. A flip of the switch, like, oh my gosh, I need help with SEL, it's been a whole year, so. I think that that kind of almost opened a lot of people's eyes of like, this is happening all the time. With our kids and with our staff and with us not having the tools. And the staff wanting to have the tools and kinda like what you were saying, just coming at it a different ways. Um, because that's all we can do at this point.
I guess I just, like, the boards, our role is not to say what professional development the administration offers to you. Or how they determine that that SEL, like, I I guess I'm trying to, I wanna think about what our role is in supporting that request. Because we get, we approved one day a month for the next following year, a full day with two hours of unscheduled prep time in it, right? That's the PD plan that we approved for next year, I, and I hear your request and maybe that's not as much as you'd like, or you want something now. Um, so I'm just trying to think of like how, I'm just processing what the boards.
I think to the hiring of another counselor here for next year at Glen Hills. And as a psychologist is going to be also just having people, because you have, we have. One, one person who's here all the time and two. One, one person who's here all the time and two people who are between two buildings, right? So.
Right.
Securing that and just having. Next year is huge. Like, I can't say how huge it will be to have that additional support. Because when you have one person, that one person is then stretched thin over five hundred kids in our ratio. For, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the ratio for a counselor in middle school should be one to three hundred and it's one to five hundred right now. It's an impossible task.
Right.
For the one counselor that we have. So we need that additional support. So you have approved that, so they decided it's a big deal for us to have that.
But this speaks to another potential update that I'd like to see happening and it's an agenda item that. Probably won't get to anyway, but um, regular updates on S E L on our staff and how they're being utilized and where they need supports and how we can better utilize them. That needs to be a more regular conversation we're having as well because it's so intertwined. And you can't, you can't disentangle them.
So we have to move this along because it is at nine o'clock. Do we have our our action? Plans? Everybody's heard. You've heard what Danielle needs from you. Um, I think I've said the things that I need. Um, you have a plan. Any other comments or suggestions at this time? Before we move on to the next set. And we will be revisiting this at our next board meeting no matter what, so. Okay, uh, I um.
We're not used to you yet. We're just.
Shush. Summer, I I don't need any help. I am fifty years old. I will figure out how to, I think I know how to read a little bit. If I don't, I say, I don't know how to say the word. Summer Academy. Hi, they still here. She's still here. She is gonna make a brief update on Summer Academy. Am I right? Uh, Mrs. Dr. Smith, you're gonna do a brief update on Summer Academy. I know, she don't really wanna hear what you have to say. Yes, we we called you.
All right. Well, good evening to the board and good evening to those of you that are here in person. As well as for those individuals that are online watching today's board game. Um, I have the pleasure of giving Summer Academy updates. Um, I'm Dr. Smith during the regular school year. I am a departmental principal and during the summer, most people know me as a Summer Academy coordinator. Uh, so I'd just like to share some brief updates below. Um, the fear, uh, do you like, these are do you like questions? The feel of boozing slime, the sound of clicking, clacking fidgets and the smell of cherry Play-Doh. If you answer yes to any of these questions, then sensational sensory exploration is the class for you. Do you like learning about the earth's natural phenomena? Do you practice the three R's at home, reduce, reuse and recycle? Then our friend, the earth is the class for you. Where you will go on adventures around the world using fiction and nonfiction literature as your guide to learn about earthquakes, volcanoes. Landslides and all the ways that the earth changes directly below your feet. The students will also create hands-on, beautiful art projects to reflect the diverse geological formations that exist around you. Let's explore the natural features of our ever-changing friend, planet earth. And lastly, do you like learning about the time periods of the past? And how art and music came together to express those times? Then you'll enjoy why music and art became besties. In this class, students will learn about all the features of the classical romantic and impressionist periods from singing. Movement and creating your own works of art.
I wanna come to Summer Academy.
Uh, our Summer Academy registration went live on May ninth. And is open for a few weeks with the end date being May twenty seventh. Um, we've already started to taper off in terms of enrollment. And a little bit later, I will tell you the magic number that we're at today. There's still time for families to be able to enroll. Uh, so uh, the new update for this year is in years past, we've used different student management systems. Last year, we used the family I D system and this year we're using Infinite Campus, which is our current student management system that we use throughout the year with all of our families. So that's nice. We're still implementing the same student management system and not having to pay that additional fee. And the cost for uh an outside company to come. So. So thus far, we have three hundred and seventy-three students who are enrolled. And again, we still have until May twenty seventh, so this number I'm predicting will climb up a little bit.
What are you shooting for?
It's not necessarily that I'm shooting for a magical number, although we have had five hundred in the past. But the last, I would say probably four or five years, we've been somewhere between the three seventy-five and about four twenty-five. So we're right where we should be. Um, again, Summer Academy is going to be taking place from June twenty-seventh to July twenty-eighth. That's five whole weeks. Our staff and student hours, our staff attend um every day. They're going to be attending from eight fifteen to twelve fifteen. Which gives them a fifteen-minute cushion before students arrive as well as after students um dismiss. In which they're able to help out not only with um the um dismissal process. But also have a little bit of built-in time to be able to look at lessons and do some creations for the following days' lessons as well. So they have a little bit of prep. Time built in on each end. And then our students were are gonna be going from eight thirty to twelve. And all students will have the opportunity to participate in four classes.
Quick question, um, because I know it's kinda been tabled anyways for the last couple of years, but Fabulous Fridays are, is that forgotten? Or is it somewhere?
That's a great question. It's not forgotten, but with the numbers continuously rising, every time we think that the numbers are starting to decline. There seems to be then uh all of a sudden an upward trend again. And what we are finding is that it's really challenging for. Organizations and companies to embrace a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five kids in the same space. Um, especially finding just outdoor, I mean, we could just do outdoor spaces, but some of our really. Cool and fun field trips that we've been on in the past, um, that organizations just aren't ready to have large groups.
I I remember that being issued. That's what I wanted to ask. Thanks.
Uh, we're again returning to previous programming as you guys uh remember probably the first fourteen summers. That I uh was the coordinator of the program. We really did focus in on four classes during the morning and then students having that opportunity to either. Join after-school recreational programs and or be able to go home and spend time with their families or friends within the neighborhood. And the community. And we're really returning back to that format and that structure. Um, we're no longer doing. Um, just, just an FYI, the cost of busing has been skyrocketing um as well as the gas. Um, which I'm sure we're all feeling. Uh, also, our uh current earmark of who is our our food company um at this time is. Also stopping with uh their free breakfast uh and free meals. Um, throughout the summer as well. So that's important to know. Again, we are just going back to our previous structure. Uh, last year was kind of an exception.
It's.
Ooh, you beat me to that slide. It's coming. All right, so uh every year we hire a number of staff members. We hire some of our staff using WeCan. Um, which is our our online um teacher recruitment. Uh, system that we utilize and utilize that during the school year in terms of listing our job postings throughout the school year. We did the same thing for Summer Academy in terms of recruiting good quality certified teachers for our Summer Academy program. Um, one of the biggest ways though that we actually recruit staff members is truly through word of mouth. People typically um rant and rave about the program and will go and tell their friends. And a lot of their friends will then wanna come on for the following year. And so I've met. Many amazing educators uh throughout the state of Wisconsin, coming from all different areas, all different school districts. And that actually has been um one of the things that I've been very excited about, branching out and meeting uh educators from various places. And having the opportunity to do some networking with people in other uh school districts other than just our our uh school district. So we gained about half of our staff um from outside of the district and half of our staff are our current employees. Um, in terms of staff demographics, we do have uh one coordinator administrator, myself. We have twenty-five certified teachers, twelve support staff members, two secretaries. We have our front office secretary. Um, who is Zena Perez. And then we have Sam Orozco, who is our current um health office. Uh, secretary who's also going to be acting as the health office secretary um here during the summer. Now, it is important to note that she uh is not a certified nurse, but is able to obviously deal with day-to-day like needing bandages or. Um, needing ice packs and um some of the more uh simple things that she comes across, that she may come across. Um, but really does a large part with attendance. Uh, because they actually do a dual role during the school year and she's gonna carry that through during Summer Academy as well because attendance is important for us to. Um, again, twenty-one of our staff members are current employees and then we have nineteen people that we've recruited from outside of the school district. The highlights of the program, getting back to Tamika's point, the program is free for all students. Um, and that's always very exciting because we do place a great deal of emphasis on equitable and inclusive practices and I think offering group programming is one way. To ensure that we're doing that. Um, there's a wide selection of fun academic and re- recreational classes that students are able to. Uh, select from. And again, all of our teachers are certified during our Summer Academy program as well. And this slide just represents what I just said. And this is just pictures because the elementary primary side of me loves the pictures. After-school care, we are going to continue to partner with the following organizations. And these organizations have been with us um since I've been on board uh as the coordinator. Of the Summer Academy program and probably long before my time in the district. I will continue our partnership with the J C C with Nicolay Rec Department, Glendale Heights and North Shore Preschool and Childcare. Uh, in the past, Glendale Heights has provided a bus. And has allowed um the other, the other organizations to actually get on the same bus. So if families are picking Glendale Heights, they go there. Um, after-school bus and if they're choosing North Shore, then they drop off there as well. Nicolay Rec is going to be housed here again this summer, so that's exciting. Um, they're going to start program, their programming will begin right at twelve. As the students dismiss, so they'll have that opportunity again to go into the cafeteria, which is where they all meet. They start with their uh cold lunches and then they disperse into uh different areas throughout Glen Hills. Uh, for their recreational programming after Summer Academy. That's it. Was that brief enough?
That was great.
It was great.
Guess who has a question?
Yes.
I do have a question. I'm sorry, no, I I I'm sorry. Um, no, I I I I received, I wonder if you receive feedback so um about. So the the rollout of the schedule and then sort of registration and the timing of registration. Seemed different this year than it was in like past years. And I guess I'm just, did you, I don't know if you received any feedback about that and I'm sort of wondering if you're thinking about. What your thoughts are.
So the past couple of summers, we've actually rolled out in May.
Okay.
Before that though, and so when we started with the pandemic and virtual learning. And then last year underneath Dr. Moses' leadership, those past two summers, um, we rolled out in in May.
Okay.
Um, so we started having discussions about it in March and then.
Yeah.
Rolled it up. Um, previously before that time, it was always, we tried to get the information out the first week in April. I will be honest with you. I think it's more the fact that we over the years have changed student management systems and there's training behind that. Um, there's, there's things that we we have to learn and even though we're using, you're utilizing Infinite Campus. Um, there's still training. I know Xena, um, these two young ladies attended a training just to learn like how do you. In input the students' names for Summer Academy because we had never used it for Summer Academy. So hopefully as we get smoother in our processes and procedures around use utilizing Infinite Campus. Um, we should be able to go back to that first week in April.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So the other thing um too is, and I'll be very honest, um, the last couple of years with the pandemic. Um, we have noticed a change in terms of teachers really wanting their summers to themselves to be able to enjoy their summer. And feeling like they need a break and I understand that. Um, so it 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 has been a little bit more challenging the last couple of years. To find certified teachers who are willing to commit to being with us throughout the duration of the summer after completing a full school year too. So the hope is to go back to the first weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, great question.
Next. Any other questions for Mr. Miss Doctor, sorry. Okay, we're going to uh S S T team planning. Now, um, I was asked to um lay this over. With the stipulation that we give you some direction on what we want when you do come to present.
So moved.
Oh, we wait, we wanna give them the stipulations first. Go ahead. Yeah, no, we don't want you to just share it. We. I know, but we're just gonna, we're not even gonna discuss it, so we're just gonna.
Oh, so second.
Okay, all in favor. All right, let's move on to. She did. Ooh, wait, we are a new business.
Okay, it's really. So the board approved. The board approved one day a month for professional development. So basically what I'm sharing with you. Is working with the uh with Ms. Westfall and then with the uh administrative team, just what day we chose each month. So that's really.
Second.
Motion, second, now we are in this.
They have extended hours.
So what we did to compensate for um having one day a month when we really wanted to be able to connect every other week. Is we put in an extended hours, but we did it very differently. So in the past, extended hours has been like four fifteen to five fifteen. This is only an extra thirty minutes and it's just, so you're using part of the time they're already here during the day. So that's once a month as well.
So is that cutting into the prep time?
No, that's in the morning or it's at the end of the day.
So what time do teachers at Glen Hills get here in the morning?
So they, so normally they get here at uh seven forty-five. And they have seven forty-five to eighteen fifteen, so it would be adding thirty minutes. So it'd be seven fifteen and then Parkway's usually. Done at three forty-five and then each four fifteen.
Well, they usually they have their hair seven forty-five.
Yeah, so it's an extra thirty minutes. Taking that whole hour, right? I'm sorry, I'm just trying.
Oh, it is taking the whole hours.
So we're taking away the four fifteen to five fifteen extended hours.
Yeah, but so usually though they, like, what time do kids get here? Eight twenty, so they'd have a meeting from seven fifteen to eight fifteen. And then the kids go in seven eight twenty.
So we're talking to staff, they would prefer use that time versus during four fifteen to five fifteen and then.
Well, do we have to do extended hours?
But here's the thing, here, and I'm gonna push back a little bit. They tried to do the Wednesdays where we had all of Wednesdays. We voted no on it. Then we said we're going to give, because that was eight hours, I think it was eight hours total for a month, right? So we gave them six hours for the day, but they still need that eight hours, so they.
No, they always, their their early release plan was always six hours.
It was eight hours for a month.
It would, no, no, it was six hours. It was three hours.
Six hours if we did it every other week, but one day a month was eight, but now it's down to six, which is actually down to five.
So it's.
Cause they get a lunch hour.
The plan to always have extended hours in addition to the professional development time that you asked the board to approve the plan?
No, the plan was, we have the extended hours, we're adding the professional development time. We changed it because we don't want it to be four fifteen to five fifteen at night. Cause that's really hard. Basically. It's just allocating that time because within the administrator's purview and a teacher's contract, you can have staff meetings during the month. So it's just really allocating it to a certain date.
So those are, okay, okay.
So those are, okay, okay.
So I really could have just left that off the calendar because we can just do staff meetings, but I just wanted to be clear on how we're making
So extended hours are staff meetings.
Or K L C. It's basically to connect in between since it's only once a month. To have that time to connect in between.
And we're extended hours twice a week prior to this, like last year or this current year's time.
No, they're not twice a week. They're only once a month.
It's twice a month. No, it's two in February.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at Ben's computer. I'm sorry.
So February Right, February is two because the P D day is a partner day with Nicolay, so we don't get all that time.
Okay, so in the past was extended hours once a month.
Once a month.
So this isn't changing a past practice. It's just changing the time.
And making it thirty percent of the hour.
But my understanding from Parkway teachers that I spoke to is that they, their prep time has moved to the end of the day because of the earlier start time for Parkway. So is that your understanding of where where Parkway teachers prep time falls?
Yeah, and Glen Hills is in the morning.
Okay.
I mean, that's on top of the time they get during the day, so they obviously get prep time during the day too. But they're getting two hours a month during the P D day for prep time, which is additional. She's
So hang on, so i- if they had eight hours of P D debt time on that one day, they would not have extended hours.
Correct.
Okay, so then this sounds like it's in reaction to that, so
We would have taken the extended hours out of
I don't think we should extend hours.
We would have taken it out of the calendar. It was already in the calendar.
So yeah, I I I don't think we should do
Then take the extended hours out. I don't care.
If the motion is on the table right now.
We're just trying to find some time to
Yes. So if there's gonna be any amendments, we have to vote on it. If not, we're voting on what
Actually, it's just an I have a discussion. It's not even true. It was just to share the calendar with you guys.
But doesn't the board have to approve the calendar?
You guys approved the once a month professional development time, the extended hours isn't a change, so it was just sharing.
Separate, separate issue. Doesn't the board have to approve the actual calendar?
Yeah, they are.
We did see
We approved the calendar, but it's not the
Wait, wait, let me explain. Let me explain. She, we approved the calendar and we approved the days.
The time.
The time that we were going to give them. It's her privy to put where she wants to do it.
I realize
That's what I'm asking. I'm clarifying.
I know.
Does not have to approve the actual dates on the calendar.
Right, exactly.
Right, and we we did not do that. I mean, but just to clarify, I force a discussion, but this was the actual item as well, so we can do both.
Yes, recommend and possibly take action to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three professional development calendar.
So, so when we approved the calendar, did we approve extended hours with that calendar last month? No.
We didn't address it.
I don't think extended hours are generally put into the calendar.
That's what, extended hours are never put in the calendar, even though she's just letting us know that she's doing extended hours. She could take it out, we would have never known and and it would have been perfectly fine. This calendar is just showing what days she's using, the times that we actually approved the previous time on account.
I will draw my motion if it gets us out of the answer.
What did you want?
Oh, we have a motion and and I would
I think it's, the motion is there unless, let's just vote on it and either don't or not and color it maybe. Because we already have a a motion. It's first and second. If you wanna take it off the table, then
No, so let's get the
Well, I'm just, okay, so you can do extended hours whenever you want.
That's what it sounds like.
Okay, then, okay.
She just happened to tell us.
No.
All the motion. Vote to motion approved, aye.
Are you asking us to vote?
Yes.
I'll vote aye.
No. Anyone voting no?
I'm abstaining. I just, I'm Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just tired. I don't under That's fine. I don't, it's fine. Okay.
No. Four to one, or four to
Four to
Zero to one. Four yeses, zero no's, one abstentions.
Thank, I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay.
Okay.
We're in a five, number five in business, salary and benefit approval for executives on the executive section.
So I think the only thing that you guys would be talking about is the salary schedule.
I made motion.
Oh, and support staff. You said you were gonna present on support staff. So the recommendation, yeah, the recommendation is for a four point seven percent C P I increase for all support staff.
I'm moved to increase salaries by four point seven percent for support staff.
I said, oh, go ahead, second. Moved by Ben, seconded by Carla. Discussion. Any discussion? Great, well, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Five to one, or five to zero, motion pass.
Just to be clear, that has both aspects of
No, like he said, he said move to approve.
Did I tell you about it? So let's move on to part two then, which is to prove
Thank you, Andy. Can I get there? I'm gonna say this, the next part is salary. Do you wanna keep doing this? Or you guys are gonna have to give me some time to do this in my way, in my section. So I'm not you. I'm gonna do it my way and I'm gonna follow my way. So the next part of this is the salary uh scale. We have a salary scale. Do we have a motion on salary scale?
I would like to make a motion to affirm salaries and scale and the adjustments uh as a uh as previously passed um together uh in order to clarify the prior uh action that the board took.
Second.
Are we going to?
Yeah, I will, if we have a second.
No, second.
Okay. With this discussion, we want to put um some information out there. Um the salary, we may not be satisfied with the salary scale and you as parents, but our teachers, we want to have a open uh dialogue with community about the salaries and the salary increases for teacher. So we wanna have a public hearing before July thirty-first on increasing their salaries for next year. Right now, we are putting this on the record and this salary um scale right now. It may change after we have a a dialogue with the community as well as teachers and getting input. And we would like to make sure we post that correctly. I think we have to do thirty days and we'll find a date. But then it will be posted for thirty days and a public hearing will be, will be scheduled. With that being said, discussion on, any discussion on the salary.
Just to clarify, my original motion also included the uh clarification that you have added. So uh I, if we need to be formally amended, say that we're gonna have public hearing to further adjust it.
That motion is, it's not, I don't think it's part of the motion. It's just
And ask someone else second it.
Second.
Great.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I abstain because I just, so
Two for us to vote.
Zero no's and one abstentions. Next is now, I'm going to go to five B because there's no more in five A. And it's Boiler for Good Hope School, and we're gonna probably send that to Lindsay.
So uh in January, we did an R F P for a boiler at Good Hope. Uh we received back three vendors that were interested. One uh three indicated interest. One did not end up submitting our uh proposal. One submitted an incomplete one, and then we had a third one from Stillett Mechanical. And the proposal um was for the replacement of both boilers. And they have worked with our district. Um our custodian meeting team have indicated that they're very happy with the support that they received from this company. And um they outlined a lot of different uh things in their proposal that were not indicated in the other ones that I had mentioned was not complete, including um how to remove the old boiler because those are not small. And then also things like asbestos removal because of the leak in the ages. Um, I uh also worked with D P I originally in the capital projects uh plan. This was scheduled to be uh paid out of general fund. Um but working with D P I, we are able to use fund E V for this because it is considered a community building. And this is a really good thing because A, it's not coming out of our general fund, but also because um fund eighty, when the previous budget set last frame, uh that was with the understanding that summer academy would be paid out of fund eighty. So because we are not going to be paying summer academy out of fund eighty so that we can count people. That means we have money sitting in fund E V with fund eighty. It is very specific to what you can use that money for. Um you can only use it for things that are impacting the community. It cannot be used for giving teacher raises or anything like that. So um like I said, working with D P I with our auditors, um I did get the approval to be able to pay for it out of fund eighty. So we're using things that were already levied in fund eighty. Um so it's not just money. So I am not just asking for, I don't have to go for approval to to do it because of the dollar amount.
I'm gonna just make motion uh right off the bat to uh go with recommendation.
A second.
I have a question for you. By the way, I just want to say, I thought there's a lot of good work. You and I talked about it before. And you know, it's clear that, you know, what we're doing uh and using those are good tools that we have. Um I'm, one thing that occurred to me is when it come time to sign off on it, they've given us this this bid, is there a formal contract that we end up signing off on? Um and I'm not trying to complicate this. I'm not gonna interject whatever standard, you know, policies. I'm just curious. But this is a bid, there's no contract attached to it. So do we know if they're trying to run their own terms? And the only thing that I think have never asked is, do we have a written term for acquisition that we were assigned? I just don't know the answer to that.
Uh I would have to double check. I just looked through the paperwork of what was originally in there for the scope of the project. Um and I the, I have not reached out to him, so I wanted to wait until the board approval to find out if there's a formal contract to come down with.
It might be something for us to talk about down the road because I, I know that we both talked about regularizing, you know, the uh acquisition uh
And that is one of the things that I still think that we should um like implement where we have to have a bigger base to we should have to take, we have to get a bigger base for doing it. There are people who do this work, but we're literally taking the bid. Not necessarily if we know it's the only bid that we got.
So we will put it on the website and then I
I know, I understand that, that I understand all that, but we still have to make, take even more.
Don't we have a policy about how many bids we have to actually if we spend over a certain amount of money?
It's, it's, if we have to have, we have to try to get bids and if we don't get them, we don't get them. What happens if we don't get them? We've been trying it since January to get bids. And at some point, you have to say, you know, we have to take it because they're the only people who are bidding. I just think we need to expand our, 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 our net somehow. And I think the city had done that a little bit more and 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 we just need to like look at ways to, you know, build some grounds is my, my basic.
Sorry, wait, why do we think we, why do we think we only got one bid?
So we, we have three that interest.
Okay.
Um one, I never heard back from again. I know Mr. Carlson and Michael said follow up communication and did not receive a response. The second one was from our company that um it was, it was from the area and we, and it indicated he had done some business with them. But they sent submitted a proposal did not uh include removing the boiler and the asbestos removal.
Okay.
And there were a lot of um other pieces that seem to be missing. And so when I looked at the proposal, I also worked with Mr. Carlson and Mr. Campbell to look through it well because they have the experience of going through it and reached out to to other facility managers.
Okay, so is it maybe more the, this actual, what we're looking to have done is maybe even more specialized or people let, wanna do it less in general?
Because when they come in to do the bid, they they walk around, they look and see everything to make sure that what's being done is matching the quote of the work of the year.
I do have one question and it's my last question, I promise. What is the warranty that goes along with the work?
Uh it is, it was twenty-five years. I can double check. He, he sent me a couple of different documents with the, the warranty. Um they, originally, there's two boilers in Good Hope. And um one of them is, it's on its last slide and the other one is close behind. And so when, if you look at the proposal, it has, uh there are places in cost for two versus one. And so um when we were going, we're having the conversation about the, the cover and the warranty. Um I, I believe it's a twenty-five year, but I wanted to double check if it's the same for
It occurred to me to, and since I have these questions, it's a little last statement, um it's a little unfair to like sometimes ask these questions, you know, when we don't think of them in advance. Um but one thing for us to work on is, you know, to really come up with these improvement policies so, you know, we can just say, look, you know, we're gonna get it. That's the question that we're gonna ask. Those kind of questions we never really dive into, but I've gotten
No, that's one of the things that I was going through to spoke with um Mr. Carlson and Mr. Campbell. Uh for, for me, I just like having documentation, so being able to, to say, okay, here's our bid. What are the check, like what are we looking for in that bid? Because then we all know we're looking at the same thing and asking the same questions, so it's definitely practice that
Thank you.
So it's uh all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Now the fun part begins. Ben, Lynn versus Tamika.
Yeah.
Wait, are you kidding?
No, I'm not kidding. Mocking table.
I second. Let's discuss it. I just wanna know how urgent this, discussing this is.
Um this is pretty urgent because it's going to affect what the contracts say.
The next teacher has to Oh, that's, this is why, this is what I wanna understand, I just because
It's the credit reimbursement.
Yes, okay, so we're gonna
I don't, I get it.
No, 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 it's okay. I
But this is, this is something that has to be, all right, so this is what came out of it. Ben and I agreed on one part.
I would, I would draw my second.
But I, I just wanna show you guys that this is only beginning of my markup. I have a lot of thoughts around this policy.
But you only have, you have one policy to be focused on.
I have the old one, I have the new.
No, no.
They're not old.
Oh, there's two versions. Okay.
Is, is there a current policy or we're creating one out of?
You're creating
We're gonna create, uh we, it, Ben and I cannot, we have a current policy. So let me just explain, because it's taken a long time.
The current policy, the current policy is that every credit right now of of graduate credits of beyond your degree, you get sixty-five dollars per credit every year. So that's reasonable, you know.
I, I don't put commentary.
Just give me the facts, give me the facts.
So it's, it's, so someone could have fifteen credits and they get sixty-five dollars per year and they get that check every year. Every year, uh in November, I think.
And I think if
Now
to explain this, it's sixty-five dollars per credit. And if they take one class in the first semester, they get sixty, sixty-five dollars. Second semester, they take another class. Instead of just getting sixty-five dollars, they get a hundred and forty dollars or a hundred and thirty dollars.
For the next year because now they've earned two credits.
Right, and then the next year, it'll add another sixty-five dollars to have those three, three credits all added up together.
So you taking one credit, it keeps adding.
It is conceivable that someone gets uh sixty credits without getting a masters and they get whatever sixty-five times sixty is
Come on, man.
Every, yeah, every, every November. Okay. So we came up with two different policies that kind of tighten it up a little bit. Both policies here would make whatever money they're getting now part of their base pay forever.
So, so, so some teachers have, and and I think now this is where we have to explain why we're some teachers have gotten one degree, two degree, and I'm talking about masters, gotten the bump. And then also have the way, it it's not in the policy, but the way it has been paid out. They have gotten a bump and they still have been getting these credit amounts Credit amounts for years and years.
But it's a master sixty credits at.
A masters would be like thirty thirty six.
But there are some. Um there are some people who have gotten. Quite a bit of money over the years and I don't wanna single anybody out. But the way we have figured out how to rectify this is taking the credits. Putting it into their pay right now, so say if somebody was making ten thousand dollars. And they had two hundred dollars in credit that money that they would get, they'd get every November. We're adding that two hundred dollars to their actual salary and their salary will be ten thousand two hundred dollars.
But wait, is if somebody's getting paid for sixty credits every year, I'm not sure what that is, but that would be added to their base salary.
Yes.
So four thousand dollars.
Some people have, it depends on what it is, yes.
And why, why is it better adding it to the base salary?
Because we don't. Because we're gonna stop the program the way it is, at least I want to, we're go, we don't wanna penalize anybody. They have, uh uh from what I understand, after doing some research, some of the um a previous administrator. Gave these as, I can't pay you this much in salary, but I'm gonna give you this money. In lieu of a salary, and this is not what this policy is for. It is for credit reimbursement or higher education, whichever one you wanna do, it shouldn't be to supplement an income. That's one thing I do, I am adamant about, this is not to supplement an income. So what, so what we have done, Lindsey and I have. Now, this is separate from, separate from the two policies that Ben and I have, we want, we have looked at everything that is that, there are two people. Two people who will be grandfathered because they're right in the middle of a program out right now. They are in the middle of a program, you can't change their program as they're in the middle. So they will, when they finish their degree, they will have this this payout in November. Just because it's the way it is. And then once they finish their degree, they'll get their eight thousand, it'll be done and that's the end of it.
Could you guys give us an overview of how what your what your proposals are and then I'd also like to hear what the admin recommendation is?
So.
So go yours first.
So my policy uh is very similar to the current policy. Uh teachers would get sixty five credits or six, sorry, sixty five dollars per credit every year, up to thirty credits. Uh and that's because by the time you get thirty credits, you should be getting your masters. And I I know maybe some are thirty six credits, but um it's about thirty. Then, after that, they get the eight thousand dollars. Um and no supplemental pay from credits. If they wish to continue taking college credits, they can earn up to thirty more and get that extra supplemental pay every year. And the reason I support this is because uh one, the superintendent has to sign off on the classes. So if a reading teacher is taking a math class, that's not gonna help their instruction, so they wouldn't sign off on it. However, if a math teacher wants to take math class, uh I think that does make them a better teacher. And you continue to become a better teacher, so it kinda puts you, you know, one step forward and you should be uh compensated for that.
And then you have additional terms for.
Oh yeah, you have a second, yeah, sorry, second masters, you get uh two thousand dollars additional to the eight thousand dollars you got. I think I put PhD was twelve thousand, yeah, good.
So yours is kind of like a cycle, two thousand, up to two thousand dollars per year as supplemental pay for credits earned. And then when you reach thirty, when you cap out, you either have your masters and get a bump or you cap out, you're done. But then you can start over.
So once you get to the thirty credits, I'm assuming you get your master's degree.
Okay.
And if you don't get your master's degree, then yeah, you cap out.
And then you get about two thousand dollars a year.
Right.
But if you get your masters, you're gonna get eight thousand dollars a year.
But then your supplemental pays.
And your supplemental two thousand stops.
Right, until you maybe get thirty more graduate credits, if you so desire.
And is that, just to clarify, is that how it works, if you get your masters, it's an eight thousand dollar supplemental pay every year, not eight thousand dollars?
It's right now, it's eight thousand into your salary and then they were still paying.
And we're still getting the credit. And under your plan, it's eight thousand into your salary and no more.
And then you start over.
You don't get the sixty five.
If you go to.
You would, you know, you would get the sixty, oh, oh, not on the stuff you got.
I've got my masters, I'm gonna get the eight thousand.
But if you take new credits, then you would get compensated.
So that's Ben.
Okay.
My plan, we are, I I feel we give them a hundred and sixty five, I mean a hundred and thirty dollars. Per credit, in the discussion, you have thirty, if you take one credit, you get one thirty five. Taking another credit in the second semester, you get one thirty, I mean, sorry, one thirty, when you hit. Your masters, you get eight thousand, second master, two thousand, third master, one thousand. And all along, if you are getting credits, you get credits for classes that you're taking at the time. It doesn't matter if you go, it takes you ten years to get that class, we are gonna give you one fifty or one thirty for every credit.
Just one time, a single payment.
What the single payment of one credit, which are one thirty each time. And they can sit on ten credits forever, they're not gonna get any more money until they take classes of one thirty again. This is a huge savings for our district, huge, extremely huge. Fifty plus thousand dollars per year. Um I am in favor of this is because you still get your eight thousand dollars type. I have doubled the amount, so technically, you're gonna get the same amount for the first and second year, you won't get it for the third. And you'll only get the one thirty.
So currently, if I get a masters, I'm gonna get my master's salary bump and I'm gonna continue to get the per credit payment?
That's it, so.
I've gotten the salary rate if I.
But I'm trying, right now, you're talking about our policy right now.
Yeah, practice.
Our practice is right now, you got the eight thousand, but then they were still paying the supplement.
Yeah, that's what I meant, so they still got the sixty five per credit, plus the salary.
And they should, no, i- in our policy, it should have stopped, but it wasn't, it was a practice to keep paying. So that is an error on all of our parts for not seeing that, because they should have stopped it. At uh when you got the master. So this is why I got brought up in the first place.
So I guess I'm curious how how much is currently, how much is this cost in our district? And then what is the different budgetary impact over both of your plans?
Uh between sixty five and eighty thousand that we're paying out right now.
Okay.
And then if you pay out to people that are currently take like following the policy of what they're saying, or to me just saying, it would probably be roughly two thousand.
So it's a substantial, it goes from like sixty five to eighty thousand dollars, two thousand out.
That that means that no one has gotten a masters under this program.
No.
There've been a lot of people that have taken the courses that either came in with their masters or they've already obtained their masters and got their eight thousand bump, but are still getting that sixty five dollars.
So I will say, when it was explained to me though, as a teacher here, they did tell me that you would get reimbursed. Sixty five dollars per credit every year up until your masters and then you would start over, so if that's not the practice that's happening. I'm just saying that's not the way it was explained to me as a teacher.
Uh I completely agree, like I I think it's very clear what the policy is saying, but the practice is not.
But here's the thing, and the teachers have reached out to me, um some people who are really impacted by this. You know, because they have a huge amount of money that they get in November. And um that's and.
Oh, it's a single payout.
Yeah, it's a single payout in November. And April is, some people only get like sixty dollars, a hundred and twenty dollars, and the highest I've seen is five thousand. Like five thousand three hundred out. Um most of these people got their masters in early nineties and two thousands. So these are sometimes twenty plus years of getting this money.
Wait, but no one got a masters if it goes down to two thousand, right?
No, 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 this this is, okay, I think I think you're.
Well, you said the cost goes down to two thousand. Oh, just for the credits, not for the masters.
The master bump is still eight thousand for, but eight thousand for the first.
I have a motion to table the topic, discussion is off topic of the motion. Um so.
It is not off topic of the motion, because this is the same thing.
I I'm trying to figure out if I can decide anything tonight, so to me it's on topic.
Thing, we can, we can table this, but we had two meetings in policy.
Well, I'm I'm just asking, yeah.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just giving you some background, I know, we had two meetings in policy, we had union come in. Ben and I couldn't decide which policy he wants to do, do one thing, I wanna do another. If you don't understand it, maybe we need to give you more clarity and we can table it if you want, but it has to, it. The reason, at least the.
So with the.
The first part of this has to be decided, not necessarily the policy. But the first part of this has to be decided because they are.
Well, here's my issue, I don't have the current policy in front of me.
Yeah.
So I don't know what I'm comparing to, you're asking me to change something and I don't know what I'm changing. The other part is, I I wanna understand what the budgetary implications are currently and then what they are under both of your.
Can you tell them what it was?
I just feel like this is information I should have been able to process before I was asked to make a decision about it.
This was given out ahead of time.
No, the two, your two policies.
No, this was given out two months ago.
And both policies will save the district money.
What was given two months ago?
The the information.
We we knew there was an issue that needed to be addressed, it was then went through policy and now it's coming back to the board to propose.
We send that out to everybody on the board, um the implementate, their uh they uh amounts. So if we, so this is what, so no, this is what we'll do, wait, wait, wait. This is what we'll do, we have a motion on the table, I don't know if it has been seconded.
It has been seconded.
I said, I don't know if it's been seconded.
I seconded, no, you had a motion to table, I seconded it and then asked if I could withdraw.
So do we, do we have a motion on the table?
I don't believe so.
Well, we have a motion, it's not seconded, it's not seconded, uh so I guess we don't.
Do you need more time?
Motion to table it.
I need time to think about this.
So if you're not gonna get it tonight, so do you want a table, that's what I'm saying.
Can we, can we say which one that you didn't like better?
I, well, that was my.
The other question is, what did teachers, what did teachers say?
Is there always going to ask for more money? This is seriously, they need a eighty thousand dollars in difference? And no other district in the entire state of Wisconsin, there's any plan like.
So if we table it, what's the next step?
So we're gonna get the more information, we're gonna give you the policy that you, that we have now. We're gonna give her, uh you guys the information that you just requested. We have given it out.
I just wanna clarify, have have I been sent the budgetary implications of Tamika's proposal and Ben's proposal?
Not that.
Versus the current, whatever the current is, do I have that information?
I think you would share the list of all of the pool of amounts.
Of what has been spent?
Yeah.
On the current policy.
Ooh, can I get that? I think that's from before my time, yeah.
Oh, it is, it is.
I think that was for the, yeah, so, okay, can we know how much, okay.
Can I ask a question? So if we table this, that would we be waiting till next year to make the change?
Because we. No, we cannot.
Yeah, no, I'm understanding you're saying this is urgent, I'm just, I'm also just trying to voice the fact that.
I'm just trying to think about timeline for teachers because they want contracts.
Teachers were were okay with getting the amount added to their base because they want to move it.
Yes, and that's.
Yeah, I was just wanting to teach your feedback, I mean, I get that you wanna make as much money as you can, but I'm also, I mean. If you're presenting it in a way where you're like, this is a reasonable thing.
This, the teachers said that they, the way that at least this first part of it, not our. We're we're having a fight with the the way we're gonna do the credit, but the way we're solving this is putting it in their their salaries. And then adjusting their um.
Was this teachers at your um committee meetings or how are they?
They were teachers in our committee meetings, there were calls. Mike Spol, they called, they they caught um a few even, you know, worried about the their own situation. Right, emails, so.
Thank you, so can you, if that needs to be resolved today, can you separate that as a mission from whatever we decide?
Resolve, I think you can separate it, because what our policy is, and we're stopping the the this no matter what. The the old policy is gone, no matter what, it's just if we take.
Is it the policy or the practice?
And the practice, both of them are gone, right now, we need to.
Okay.
Get rid of what the practice used to be. Fix that practice.
Yeah.
And then we're also getting rid of the policy, because it's either gonna have my policy or Ben's policy that come up. We can deal with the policy later.
This will be a board policy.
It's a, it's a board house.
Replacing a current board policy.
Yes.
Which is in writing.
There's a difference.
I feel like you both are in agreement that you wanna add the current payment to the base salary.
Yes, that's the part that we, I wanna say.
They get that into the base and then continue to.
No.
No, they're they're only getting added to their base what their current credit payment is.
Right, but if the policy goes back to what Ben wants.
It starts over anyway, no, it's, it would start over anyway.
Current payments.
But I I you would be adding that under what.
It's Allison White, it would start over anyway because these people all have masters. So it doesn't matter which plan we have, it still stops.
So you have guys have some agreement and recommendations, can you, can you clarify what you would agree on and what you would recommend?
So should we make a motion to add all the current supplemental pay into the base salary?
Yes, yes, and.
And eliminate the current policy of credit reimbursement.
Yes.
What pop, to be revealed, it's in the stamp hand.
You're gonna continue giving it as part of base salary.
Because they get it once, so like if they were getting three thousand dollars every November for twenty years. Now they're just gonna get that three thousand dollars once, instead of getting it every November for twenty years.
Well, one says their base salary this year, but then that that's their base going forward.
But it's still a lot of big savings because you're not giving up supply, like.
It's considered income.
No, but do you understand, but they're gonna continue to be paid every year and their their base salary is gonna grow every year.
But eventually, eventually, you know, people will retire and that we have the new policy.
Okay, so long view.
And long view, and we don't want to, we also never wanna take money away. When we're changing policy, if we take this completely away and didn't put it in base, they would be losing money.
So, but in this first year, we're certainly not saving all of that except for two thousand.
With no, it's, it'll be after this year.
I I need more time to process all this.
So I will again raise my motion.
But I I don't wanna put.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, Robert Cronwell, seventy five thirty North Applewood Lane. Uh I do have a question. Yeah. Sorry, am I on now?
Can we?
This talking is.
Is it not coming through?
Is your phone tone?
It's still, so Andy, why are you not concerned? Like it's it's ten o'clock and you wanna annoy me.
I just got a text from another participant saying they can hear Rob.
Oh, okay, I don't know why you can't hear me.
Real time communication is magical.
So it sounds like. Class will, I mean, I'm just saying.
So what I'm processing here, what I'm hearing is that at the very least, you both agree and would support a motion to, number one. Roll the supplemental payments. Oh, is he a?
Sorry, we have stuff you could type, I apologize.
Roll the supplemental payments into base salary, right, for any employee who's receiving them.
Right.
And two, um we're gonna cancel on the existing policy and practice. With a promise to come back soon to write a new policy or to agree on a new policy.
Could you modify it to say practice? Because I haven't seen the policy and I have an issue saying.
That's where I I keep. It's, that's where I, I keep saying that it is the practice that we have been doing, not necessarily.
But doesn't, can we clarify the ending of the practice?
An ending.
For my lawyer brain.
I, for your lawyer brain, even his policy and my policy are different than the policy is there, so we want it to end it completely, there needs to be a modification on it.
I know, I just haven't seen the policy, so I have a, I, I don't feel like it's responsible to me to say cancel something I haven't seen.
But here's. But here's, there's a couple of things you can do, we're canceling it now, but if you, number one, you have to trust, sometimes you have to trust the committees. But if you read, let me finish, if you read your policy and say that it is great, and I wanna bring it back, then you can bring it back. But I think this policy is literally cost, not cost efficient whatsoever.
But they're saying it's not a policy, it's a, it's a.
It is a policy, it's a prac, it is a policy, and then there's a practice.
I would ask that next time if there's a policy we're being asked to cancel, or consider that that policy is included or that.
I didn't find it in policy, it's just in the staff handbook.
It's in a handbook.
And that, I would like something like that to be included.
And actually, I know, yeah, it is in a handbook.
And I'm sorry, I emailed the teacher a little bit.
You know, maybe the thing to do then, just for night is, is, uh, cause I thought that, and we had, uh, some special events previously, that we thought that we, uh, suspended that policy. Or the practice, I should say, last year.
We didn't suspend the practice, it happened in November, so, um, we need to just vote on ending, or. It, I would, I would ask that you vote on doing what Ben and I both agree on, which is rolling in these, uh, these credits into their salaries.
And we'll leave the policy the way it is for now.
I know, I'm just, I'm about to read it, if I can find it, I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, it's very challenged.
Credit.
Thanks, thirty. Thank you.
Can I just look on your computer?
Yeah, sure.
Was it emailed, it was just now.
All my computers being. Credit reimbursement, thank you.
There we go.
Is it long?
No.
No, it's short.
You wanna read it out loud?
Yeah, the, the district believes that continuing education helps all teachers become better at their craft, because of this belief, the district will increase the supplemental pay of any teacher that attains a master's degree in a pre-approved program by the superintendent. The base pay increase will be eight thousand dollars and be prioritized to start it at the beginning of the school year, or January first, if the degree is earned and finished in the fall of the year. For example, if a master's degree is finished between January one and August fifteen, the teacher's pay will increase eight thousand dollars at the beginning of the school year, if the degree is earned between August sixteenth and December thirty first, the district will increase the pay. Of the teachers, four thousand dollars starting in January, and an additional four thousand dollars beginning with the next school year. Teachers will be reimbursed sixty five dollars per approved college credit. Note that teachers' credits start over after the attainment of a master's degree, and all credits must be pre-approved by the superintendent.
Is that the full?
That's it.
So that is what that says, but the practice.
Is different.
Is different.
Okay, do you have a problem with this policy as it is written?
Yes.
Okay.
Ben has a variation of that policy.
Okay, right, it's not exactly what I.
It's, that's why I'm saying, he has a variation of this policy, and my policy kinda changes it completely.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna make a motion.
Ooh, your first, is this your first?
I'm gonna move to roll, I just gotta say it, so we can just move that to, just hit the discussion.
Wait, hold on, before you do that, do we have Rob's question?
He has a question about base salary in, in negotiations, but then he disappeared, so we'll follow up with him.
Okay, let's.
I'm gonna make a motion to roll current supplemental payments into base salary, and to table the discussion of revising the policy.
That doesn't cancel the practice, which they also.
But that's why I said, let's just leave it, because it's not, it's not gonna matter, cause the practice will.
Cause if you follow this policy, that practice doesn't exist, I mean, is that accurate?
Not to.
Okay, all right, all right, I'm just trying to understand.
We have a time, because we don't have until fall anyway.
We have, right, cause the, the critical issue is whether you're gonna roll it into salary, right?
So this is what you need. This is what you need, okay.
How does that address? And and just in practically speaking, how, how does that address credit reimbursement, and and we don't.
It doesn't, it, and that's the key, this is two different issues, but we have been paying on a, a practice. Not that's in the handbook, but a practice that we have been doing, we need to clean this up, because, so we don't take anything away from our teachers.
Yeah.
Clean this up, put it in the policy.
And I, and I will say.
No, hold on, hold on, I mean, it's point of order, and it's legitimate, what you're.
That's what I'm.
We, we have one possible action here today, to act on credit reimbursement policy.
But that is, it's.
Carlos' motion did not address credit reimbursement policy, and that means that if we act on it, that we're acting on it, not really four corners of what we've given out to the way to act on. So, I, I don't know that, you know, it, that the motion itself is in order, because I think it, it's not addressing the policies that were attached.
Could you, could she correct it as policy language?
It is.
It's in, it's in your policy, right, that's attached, isn't it in there?
Yeah, attached.
Real quick, I just wanna say that the, one in the employee handbook right now is ambiguous, because it does say that. It's, well, whether it's sixty five dollars once, or whether it's sixty five dollars every year, because it says.
But all credits have to be approved by the superintendent, so if the superintendent says that credit you've already, that, like, doesn't Allison have some discretion?
They do, yes.
If Allison's right.
Yeah, she does, and so, but it says that all teachers' credits start over, and the attainment of a master's, so that would imply that you get sixty five dollars every year until you get that master's degree.
So you know, you want to, I don't know.
Well, that's already.
So the current policy is to give teachers sixty five dollars per credit every year.
But look, if they have these right, that we can't move on my motion, then we can't meet Allison's administrative need to decide on salary today anymore. We can't do what she needs us to do, if you're right.
Well, are you asking for it to be, your motion to be adopted as a policy? I mean, not really policy, it's one time action.
Well, doesn't she need us, our approval to do that anyway, to roll it into salary?
Yeah.
Then yours, if you're right, then we can't do what urgently needs to be done tonight. But.
I, I get, I'm just gonna communicate with two teachers that they're, we have the way in their contract, but that's.
I'm just trying to figure out if we would need approval to do that.
Yeah, you will need approval, cause we have to approve, we approve those, in November, we approve those, and that's how the things keep getting brought up, but we have to approve that name.
I mean, if it's written in the policy, put it in the or tax.
I know, but.
But it, it, it's still in action outside of the policy.
Oh, you, you're asking for that.
You said, roll into base.
I roll in my.
It's in the, yeah.
If you look at her.
Oh, is it in yours, yes, it's written, I see.
Yes.
Let me see, which one is yours, yours is.
The one that says the same word.
When you made.
It's the one that doesn't say one.
It says for the twenty twenty two, twenty three, or twenty one, twenty two.
The salary for twenty one, twenty two, it does say where, payment will be applied to their base salary for twenty one, twenty two.
Well, I mean, that's, we can easily put that into my policy too.
But I'm just saying, that is what, it's part of a policy that we.
But I'm saying it's in there, it's part of the policy, you can't amend a policy, and we have to bring it back if you wanna amend it.
I'm thinking about just being approving a part of it.
It's not, actually, it's not a policy, it's in the handbook.
Well, that's.
Is it a handbook, a policy document?
Not.
It's a practice or procedure, it's not a po, it's not a board policy.
I, I, I wouldn't agree that the characteristic of the motion is, is not a policy, but it's practice, it's, 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 it's a, it's a, you know, it's, it's a directive. You know, to Allison, right?
Well, we're gonna, let's just table it, then we're gonna have to table it, right?
I, I don't think we should, but it's up to you guys, I don't really.
But how, how, how do you see moving forward on this? Let's, let's, let's stick, how do you, how do we move forward?
We're gonna have to bring it back in June, and that, or have a special meeting, because we need to make the.
We could do a special meeting just for one, just for that part, ten, fifteen minutes, once we have all our information, right?
Yeah, sure.
If we all have the policies, we all have the budget information Danielle wants, we all have both of your things, we can write out our notes.
Should I rewrite in the bottom there that I also, uh, increase the base pay?
Yeah, yeah, that, just put that in.
I also think, you know, to address that's a policy, but the other, uh, action on supplemental pay, um.
No.
The actual motion, I mean, the agenda, or act.
We're all, we're only talking about credit reimbursement, cause I don't think, and this is where Ben and I have a sup, a, a fundamental difference. Credit reimbursement is not a supplemental pay, it is something that is given, and anything that we talk about supplemental pay is something completely different.
I would like to know this publicly, so that they know that if this is a possibility, that we're gonna make Carlos' motion accepted, or if we're just gonna add on this portion of, uh, the motion, that that may be something that we do right now, if not.
But he, that's what I'm saying, he will put it on his or ours, and we're just.
They're saying that that it's part of the policy, as one of them has drafted it, that they agree on.
So if he adds a choose policy, it's just a policy decision.
Hey, 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 I mentioned.
It, it encompasses, I mean, why don't you just make it as broad as it can, so we can address, we, so we could have done what, you know, needed to do tonight, right?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't know, and, but, you know, I mean, I'm not faulting anyone for how the wording is on there, I'm just saying, you know, if we walk through this, I, I would not want to take an action of this.
Okay, then.
So the question is, the special meeting about the policy, or is the special meeting just about that other part?
We're gonna do that.
To get back to it.
No.
Well, I see what you're saying, you need, you should do it all.
Okay, I was just curious if you wanted more touch on the policy part.
We may do one, we may do the other, we may do combination both, but we should at least make clear that we're gonna do potentially.
We'll figure out what's gonna be on the agenda.
Um, let's go to the, can we, uh, I withdraw my motion if I have to.
I bring my motion back to table.
Yeah, I can't, like, somebody hired.
You're up.
What?
You have to second.
Second.
I'm in favor of table eight.
Hi.
Five to zero.
I'm not even gonna tell you.
Is this the, um.
So this is on COVID mitigation, and listen, uh, I'd asked actually to, this was on Jennifer's, be outside of conversation.
Well, it's a conversation, because we had an Orsor Health Department meeting, and we're very close to being at the high level in Milwaukee County, and when we initially took masks off. We said that if the county levels went to high, we would do universal masking, so I reached out, you guys.
Current mitigation.
Right, so it's just following the CDC guidance, so I reached out to other districts, to, to give you an idea of what they're doing. Um, and then created a recommendation based on a combination of other districts, and what's been working really well for us around internal data. So my recommendation was that if the community rate were to return to high for two consecutive weeks, and internal data, and in a full school, or a grade level, or a classroom is three percent. Would then return to mandatory masking for just that area for two weeks, and part of the reason that I made that recommendation is because for the month of May, we've had six total students. With COVID, which is not high internal data, so I would hate to ask the community to go back to universal masking if our internal data was that low. But then I did add a caveat, that if the community rate were high, uh, we would discuss like graduation, or possible big events, and whether or not we would want that to be masked mandatory. Because then we're bringing in parents from the community, and students, and mixing like a whole plethora of people together versus classrooms that are coordinated.
This, you said it would be a discussion, but this says.
I'm sorry, yes, that we would do two weeks, and then we would do masks for.
So if Milwaukee County has.
Two weeks of high, we would mask at graduations.
Have they had two weeks of high?
No, they're not at high yet, but that's why I wanted to bring it, because if it changes this Friday, when we get our update, I know that families would ask. And they would say, you said you'd follow this guidance, so the health department indicated they were close.
Oh, so this actually gives you another week to, so.
Yeah, we get an update every Friday from the health department.
So, it, our current policy though, says.
CDC guidance, which would mean high level mandatory masking for everybody.
And you're basically asking, man, just put the baby, don't we do private?
And, and monitor internal data.
Oh, and.
So if there was a grade level or classroom that was at a percentage, we would mask there.
But why is this an action item, because we know what our policy and procedure is.
She wants. Because I'm asking for it to be outside of CDC guidance.
You wanna mimic what other districts are doing.
And use internal data.
Are other districts using the community, are, like, are they just, are they, are any districts just going by their own internal data? Right, that's what I know, that some districts just say, if they get three percent within their schools, then they go back to masking.
And it's really, so Mapledale says, community rates high, schools three percent will discuss changes, so it's not even an automatic trigger, it's just a discussion. Nicolay's using the two consecutive weeks of high, which is why, um, which makes sense, because.
High in their school, or high in the community.
In the community, in the community. And then you can see fast, um, point base side two.
It was, there a question, Alex?
Nicole Casey, um, just asking, that was my question, what, you said you gathered data from the other Starman's school districts, and the question was what they were doing. Um, and also just, I mean, considering the conversations we had tonight around the mental health of our students and that affects our COVID. Um, I guess I would highly encourage us to really value that as part of this conversation to, um, and I think somewhat we're at a point where people have to start. Making those choices, and obviously can be optional, or I like that idea of discussing changes, but to continue to take something more away from students who we are already seeing. Just outward display that this, this has reached a, a critical point, I think would be remiss.
I agree, and that's part of the reason I, I wouldn't want it to be a blanket trigger, because I, I think trying to go back would have a serious impact on.
But you have, you sort of do have.
So we've done that, we've done that already a little bit, so for example, we had a third grade classroom that had a couple of cases within a week, so that classroom.
Right.
We asked parents, so that's, that's pretty much what I'm asking for, to be able to assess different classrooms or grade levels.
I mean, I guess I'm thinking about like graduation concerts being mask mandatory, and considering.
And actually, we only have, I think, I don't think we have any concerts after this week, wait, no even orchestra concert.
I know, but I, I guess my preference would, might be to discuss possible changes, as opposed to having it be.
I'm totally done with that.
Mandatorily triggered, because I, I think, like you said, I mean, it's ten twenty, I feel like people in our community may have thoughts, sure, teachers, students, et cetera, and, and I'm open to hearing them.
Totally done with that. I agree.
I think that.
I just wanted to bring a recommendation.
Yeah, I know, I just, yeah, I just don't wanna move to do something that seems sort of stark at this time, but I wanna discuss.
So, would we, would we be comfortable with the idea of recommending that? We, we will discuss if the community levels return to high, and that that won't.
Or are data, or are you asking?
Because that's my concern, is that we initially said, if it goes to high, we all mask.
So we'll have a discussion. Right.
So, so we need to say that we're gonna move outside of that, and have a discussion if it goes to high.
Okay.
Okay, one, one quick set, are we, this Friday is the second week, or it's close to high?
It hasn't been high yet.
So, they're saying it's close, so we'll know this Friday if it is, I would suggest this. Because we're gonna be bringing this salary thing, if it does get to high, that we put it on the agenda for this, cause we need to talk about it right away.
Yeah, okay.
Um, if not, let's monitor, but once it gets to that high, then we need to come in and then make a decision, or have some conver, we could have conversations now with people. And see what, what best practices are, but you have to make a decision, decision to change the, the actual policy that we have, you will know more this Friday.
But we have to change.
Yeah, we have to change the leg, which, um, the whole thing, so we have to do it then, but at least Friday, you'll know, if this Friday we're not up at high, then it's, it's.
But if we are high on Friday.
Then it's universal mask.
Right.
Right, so if we're high Friday, then we would say that we're gonna then schedule a meeting to discuss, but we wouldn't automatically go mask.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right?
So, right.
But wouldn't be second week in a row.
Well, that's part of what I recommend.
Yeah, but thanks, so.
So we just have to have, so if it's high on Friday, then we are saying we're scheduling a board meeting to discuss next steps, but we're not gonna mask at one.
I just, I'm trying to, I'm like, Dale.
Yeah, that's all I do.
Yeah, that's what I think, you're saying, once we come Sunday.
I'm like, yeah, the meeting on the weekend, and then we, uh, you know, make it.
I'd rather just, I would prefer to say if it's high on Friday.
I agree.
If it's high on Friday, we schedule a meeting.
We schedule a meeting.
Uh, no, teacher handbook, yeah, look at teacher handbook.
Yeah.
Um, if it's high, then we schedule a meeting.
I don't believe.
Cause I don't wanna automate the mask. Okay.
All right, good, moving along.
Oh, he's in person.
Did we?
We are.
So do you have to, do you have to vote them to say that we will, on that, we have a mask, cause it's high?
That's what I'm saying, we have a, cause our current policy says if on Friday it goes high, we should have to institute universal masking.
So we're changing that to, we schedule a board meeting to determine.
Right, so that is, that's where we should have a motion at.
To discuss possible changes.
Okay, thank you, second.
Motion. What is the motion, do you guys even know what the motion is?
The motion is to, uh, have a school board meeting if it gets high, and not mandate universal. The motion is to, uh, have a school board meeting if it gets high and not mandate universal masking until after.
Until after the discussion, okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right, all right.
I propose motion carries. We are at, uh, consent agenda.
So moved.
Um, there is one, um, correction to the consent agenda, which is a vote. And I think Cara knows it was four to one instead of five, and that was the vote on, um.
So do we?
Sorry, that was the vote on the, uh.
Director.
Director. She has corrected that, so we can still, with, we can still do the consent agenda with that correction. Motion.
So moved.
I second. All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Five to zero, carries. Uh, let's see. Is it a presentation? We don't need to do. Visitors may speak.
No, that's a.
Visitors may speak on any agenda or non-agenda item at this time, state law and or court policy may lead to the school board's response. Go ahead, Rob.
Robert Cronwell, seventy-five thirty North Applewood Lane. So I just had a quick eleven points to make. I'm just kidding. So I'm glad you tabled the, the.
Credit re.
The credit reimbursement. It's a complex issue. I enforce these things for a living for the state. You do not wanna do it on the fly. I have serious questions about whether you can change your teacher's base salary with the policy decision. My understanding is they're union representative, right?
No.
No.
They're not anymore.
No.
Oh, what did that say?
That's why we know what we're doing up ahead.
Okay, no, I, that, that was my concern that you couldn't actually just arbitrarily change it cuz they're still union representative. But okay, then, then you can.
But you see, Rob, sometimes I know what I'm doing. We know what we.
All the other districts are represented here and this one had been in the past, so I assume this is the one. I did wanna point one thing out.
Go ahead.
Um, when you had approval resignations tonight, there were three seventh grade teachers, uh, who are resigning, your, your special ed teacher and two seventh grade teachers. And I wanted to point out the correlation between that and the fifty-five events, the suspension events at the seventh grade level and that maybe this problem is having an effect on your staffing, uh, and something else to consider. Additionally, at your April twentieth meeting, when you approved resignations and retirements, there's no indication of who that affected.
Yeah, that was our mistake.
Okay, so I just.
Yeah.
When I saw that all these seventh grade people leaving, I was like, I wonder what happened to the last meeting that I couldn't.
It was announced in the beginning of the meeting. Oh, yeah, we said the names, but.
Yeah.
But they didn't add it to board tax. You let us know what we need to add to board tax.
Actually, I watched the tape and I didn't see it, but I only looked at when it was discussed on.
Right, it was at the very beginning of the thank you with the thank yous.
And I appreciate the, um, and we can. Well, you said it actually during the agenda. I, I didn't. Can, like, can we share reasons?
No.